Katerina and Chris came to me looking for their first home.
Whether it was finding a house or a mortgage broker, Rebecca helped us through every step of the process of buying a home. We highly recommend Putnam Real Estate.
Whether you're looking for your first home, an investment property, or need to sell, our professional agents and brokers will save you time and money. We're familiar with the local building, zoning, and conservation codes, as well as the financing rules for first-time home buyers. Our success comes from your satisfaction.
My name is Rebecca Putnam, broker-owner of Putnam Real Estate. If you're looking to buy or sell, Putnam Real Estate is here for you.
Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce.
The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community, and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth Home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Seven o'clock, I'll call the meeting to order. Welcome to the Monday, June 29, 2015 Selectmen's Meeting. The Board has just returned from Executive Session, and I'll invite you all to join us in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I'd first like to announce in our Executive Session, we were able to approve a contract with the ASME Unit B, and it's been a long time coming in devising that contract. We're very pleased with the agreement we've been able to come up with. Also like to announce the two upcoming meetings we have. First is on July 7th, on Tuesday, we have a joint meeting with the School Committee. That will be held in the Falmouth High School Library at seven o'clock. And July 13th, in two weeks, we'll be having the Betterment Hearing for the Little Pond Sewer Project. That'll be at Falmouth High School Auditorium, starting at 6:30. And I'm sure we'll have some people there to give us some input and have a discussion on that issue. Any other announcements? Is there anyone who'd like to make public comment on any issue that is not on our agenda? Mr. DuFrayen? Again, please limit your comments to about two minutes.
Mr. Chairman, Board of Selectmen, I'll be as brief as I possibly can, hopefully I can do it in two minutes. I have several, several things that have bothered me in the last few months. First of all, several years ago, I brought to the attention of the powers-to-be the cupolo on top of the Chamber of Commerce Building. I don't know if you people walk once in a while and take a look up there, and I suggested at that time that it'd be taken care of. Mr. Vidal, who built that, said it would last another 100 years, but the way we're taking care of it, I don't think it's going to last 25 years. Now, why we are not maintaining with a paint job, a simple paint job, the cupolo on the Chamber of Commerce Building, which is a historical building in the center of downtown Falmouth. That's my first item. The second item is several years ago, I brought to the attention of the Department of Public Works, the condition of the fire hydrants throughout all of Falmouth. I'm a guy that likes to tour all the back streets. They're a disgrace. They're, they're, they absolutely look like hell from an aesthetic point of what is Falmouth all about? Who's in charge? Yeah, I have no idea. But that was three years ago, when I talked to Ray Jack about at least having someone go around and/or have an adopt-a-hydrant-type program. That was what I suggested to him. The third, Falmouth Heights, we're going to open the beaches tomorrow. At the end of Amherst Ave, if you walk across the street, there's a stairway going down to the beach, and it's a liability waiting to happen. The thing is so rusted, and I'm telling you right now, I'm making this public because it's a liability waiting to happen. It is so rusty. Somebody put duct tape, I guess, last year or the year before. Now, this is not acceptable. You know, the beaches are one of our major resources, financial resources, and the people that use the beaches should have no liability to have to worry about. I want every one of you to go take a look at it, and I am not elaborating. We have fabricators in this town. It should not be a cost. It should be something that should be taken care of immediately. Now, we open the beaches, I believe, tomorrow. Am I right, Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Okay. We open the beaches tomorrow. If, if that section of handrails is not taken care of, I guarantee somebody will go to the hospital with a steel splinter. And my last little one is I sit on the bench on Main Street every now and then, and there's one bench on Pagnodin Park, I wish they would clean underneath it because it's still got last winter's garbage.
Thank you very much.
And again, we're talking Main Street, Falmouth, and I'd like to see at least when they empty the rubbish cans, just clean it up.
Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak out.
No one else?
And hopefully you heard what I've said. I don't know what the solutions are. You know, I mean, if I bring these things to your attention, this was three years ago. Three years ago, I brought the cupolo and the hydrants to the attention of the public officials of the Town of Falmouth. Now, if we're not going to do anything, then you people are the responsible elected officials. I want you all to know that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am?
Good evening. My name is Mary Berry, Precinct Two. I'm also Vice President of the Friends of the Falmouth Public Library. It's my pleasure to announce that the Friends' Annual Summer Sale of Books is going to run July 1 through 6, from 10 to 4 p.m. And also, the last day of the sale is July 7, from 10 to noon. Of course, it's at the main library, and we take up most of the front lawn for that on Main Street. We have well over 50,000 books, including children's books, classics, movies, books on tapes, cookbooks, travel classics, you name it, we have it. And they're all at excellent prices. We're so happy to be the recipient of all these fabulous books that come from the community just being so generous in their donations. We're also really thrilled this year, we have a real friend over on Nantucket, and that's Nathaniel Philbrick. He's given us 18 cartons of fabulous books, all of them are historical in nature, and they're all books that he used in his research for his bestselling books. The Mayflower, Bunker Hill, all the rest of them. So, he even has made all his marginal notes in them. So, if you're a history buff, this is a rare opportunity. And as everybody knows, all the proceeds help to support our libraries. And, you know, it's just so fabulous, we end up being able to put on children's programs, adult programs, we get rental books and DVDs that we, we can give a tout to people across the whole community, and museum passes for families. So, go out and support your library, get some great books, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Pat Johnson. I don't think this is on, or is it?
It's just for the TV. It doesn't record, it doesn't magnify.
Okay. All right. Well, I'll, I'll speak up. I, I just want to support the Selectmen in recommending a roundabout in the North Falmouth, 15128A intersection.
That is actually on our agenda.
I know it is, but I can't stay that long. So, I wanted to just say, I, I'm a biker, as you know, and I have seen roundabouts everywhere, and especially in Europe, everywhere they have them. And they're very effective, and people get used to having them. And I think the time of having major, big stoplights and everything is something past history. And I think a rotary is a great idea, and it can be beautified, and it's, I hope you go for it.
Thank you very much. Sir?
Hi, my name's Al Jones. I own Elvis Taxi here in town. And Doug, I guess I did vote for you. The, we got a big problem with Uber coming to town lately, and, you know, they, we bust our hump, all fall.
That is an issue that we have on our agenda later today.
Oh, later on.
And we'll be occupied in a public hearing to have discussion about that.
Okay.
So, it is something that we will be looking to. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Federin?
Mark Federin, Precinct Six. Last comment period, I commented on the dredging of Little Pond and how it was run through the summary of actions, and that I questioned whether the funding source, being Article 17 from 2011, was in fact proper or legal. It's my understanding from someone in the Wastewater Committee that you did change the funding and restore that back into the Article 17, and now it's being used for oysters as it should have been in the first place. So, I'd like to thank you for that. And I would like to request that you tell us where the funding came from in some future meeting. And also, I'd like to comment that the dredging job already plugged up in the spillway. I mean, it really wasn't dredging. I went down and measured that for my town meeting article. I mean, you need to take in the neighborhood of about 5,000 yards out of there. When you dredge something, if you don't leave the equivalent of like a sump, as they have in sewers or whatever, for the stuff to settle in, I mean, it's just going to plug up immediately as it did. So, sometime in the future, it really should be done correctly. And that melds right into the Article 208 meeting they had in Monmouth School last week that I attended. There were very few people, only a couple from Falmouth there. I complained about us not following the procedures, and there was some agreement among the members of Cape Cod Commission that Falmouth really could be doing more adaptive management, maybe saving some money in their sewer plan, so, plan. So, I'd just like to remind everybody to show up on the 13th for the Betterment Hearing. It's your money. Thank you.
Anyone else? Next item on our agenda is discuss the minutes of our meetings from June 15th, public session. Do we have any corrections or changes to those minutes?
I move approval.
Okay, we have motion for approval.
Second.
Second, motion is second to approve the minutes of June 15th. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? The ayes have it. Next are the Executive Session minutes from June 15th.
And I made some comments for changes.
Okay, and the, we do have a change on the, exactly what the wording of the motion that we made, just to make sure it's actually repeating exactly what we had said. With the exception of that change, do we have approval of those minutes?
I move approval.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And also, and this is a motion to approve and not to release.
And not to release. Thank you.
Motion to pass. Next, the summary of actions. First is a, and for these items, I will read them. If you, anyone would like to hold those for discussion, please let me know. The first is to approve an application for a new common victual license. This is nostalgia Dream Corp, DBA Talk of the Town Diner. I think we did have some holes, any questions on that? Second is to approve an application for an entertainment license and a Sunday entertainment license at the Cape Club. This is 125 Falmouth Woods Road, Falmouth.
Hold.
Second is to approve the application for three special one-day liquor licenses for the New Silver Beach Improvement Association for July 18th, August 15th, and August 29th. And next, approve application for three special one-day liquor licenses at Highfield Hall Gardens, July 15th, August 9th, and September 13th. And approve an application for a special one-day liquor license at Falmouth Road Race, Cape Cod Fairgrounds, August 12th. And I hear no holes on items three, four, and five. I'll entertain a motion to approve those one-day liquor licenses.
Second.
In a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed? None? The ayes have it on those. Back to number one. Do we have someone from the nostalgia Dream Corp or the Talk of the Town to discuss the common victual license? Okay. Mr. Patterson, I know we do have some things that are missing in this.
Yes, exactly. That's, that was my reason for wanting to hold this.
Building and house, I think.
Yep. Those are the two items. So, I think we, we have to defer this until we get the information.
All right, so your idea, we take no action until we get more information, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then, the next is from the Cape Club, the entertainment license and Sunday entertainment license?
Yeah, I had a quick question. They indicated they wanted to use a tent, and I didn't see anything in there, whether the building inspectors need to actually inspect that. That would be a contingency that I would add to the motion to approve.
Second.
Okay.
And so, for the use of the tent, making sure they have permission from the, from the building department.
If it's, I think there's a size cutoff, and if it's above a certain size, it has to have an inspection from our building department.
Only thing I'm not sure is whether there's a tent, it's a permanent tent they have up there that they're talking about opposed to one that is, that are on a.
You mean if it's permanent tent?
We do have that here.
Oh, for something.
Oh, good.
I wouldn't be going to stand up and speak unless I needed to, because it's always better that way if I, if I don't have to. For the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I'm attorney with Amen Law Firm, and I'm here tonight representing the Cape Club, Inc. I'm here with Mark Drago, the president of the club, to answer the question, no, there is not a permanent tent in place, and I do believe that any use of a tent will require a separate tent permit. So, that would be something that would be sought for any event that would require a tent anyways.
And that was the only provision you were putting on there, right?
Exactly. Yep.
Ms. Moffett?
I would like to inquire about the, the recorded music and live music, and it is for how long?
It would be for, you know, the period of an event typically, the club is looking to be able to conduct weddings, so there may be a DJ, or there may be a band at the wedding. It would depend on that. The license would be from noon to midnight during the week, and then from 1 to midnight on the weekends. It wouldn't be, the duration of that time would be for some period of time during the event, four to five hours typically.
And how close are the neighbors?
This is about dead center in our facility. It would be either in a clubhouse, or if it wasn't a tent, it would be very close to the clubhouse. I don't know the exact distance to the neighbors, but I don't believe there are any within a few hundred feet certainly.
Any other questions, concerns?
Nope. I move approval contingent upon any tent erection being permitted by the town building department.
Second.
Motion is second to approve of the building department's concerns on tents. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? None? Thank you very much. Next item is dealing with the, under administrative orders, and we'll take these one by one. First is to discuss the use of the Zero Spring Bars Road site for temporary construction storage of materials for the Little Pond Sewer Service Area Project.
Hi.
Good evening.
My name is Amy Lowell, and I'm the town's Assistant Wastewater Manager. And you have a draft of this MOU in your packet. I would like to give an introduction or a little history on the process here, and then go through a couple of changes that were proposed by the Community Preservation Committee to what you have in front of you. And I wanted to start with a little bit of history. The contractor for this project, so this is backing up, the Little Pond Sewer Service Area Project, the Town of Falmouth project, was, the contract for that project was awarded to Robert Auer Company in, originally at the end of April. And Bill Foster is the construction manager, is that your title actually?
Superintendent.
Superintendent, from Robert Auer for the LPSA Collection System Construction, as well as the two-liv station part of that project. And Robert Auer came to the town at the end of May and asked to use the parcel at Zero Spring Bars Road for a construction staging area for the duration of the project. So, to temporarily use that parcel as, as a staging area. And what that means is to temporarily store construction materials on the site, manholes, pipe, stone, and excavated material that is taken from the town project. I sent letters to the CPC and to the Board of Selectmen based on that request in, earlier in June, on June 11th. The CPC Housing Subcommittee, the Community Preservation Committee Housing Subcommittee met on June 18th and discussed this concept, and then it was also discussed at the Community Preservation General Meeting that evening. Julian was, Mr. Suso was present at that meeting, and the CPC and Mr. Suso suggested that a memorandum of understanding be drafted regarding the use of that property as a staging area for this project.
I just want to interrupt for a second, just to give a little bit more background that in 2010, this is a parcel that was purchased at town meeting using both town funds and CPC funds for the purpose of looking into creating a focal housing project. And this is the reason why CPC is even brought into the picture here for that, that they were the ones funding it, and they're the ones who were pushing that project forward. And so, that's the reason why it was appropriate to bring them into the question.
You're right. That's very important background. The, so I, a memorandum of understanding was drafted, and that was reviewed by the town manager and assistant town manager and, and the town council. And the CPC Housing Subcommittee met again today and had some changes that they suggested making to the wording of the MOU, and I will pass those out shortly. Then the Community Preservation Committee met this evening and voted to approve the MOU with the changes that were suggested by their Housing Subcommittee. So, I do want to let you know that I sincerely appreciate the Selectmen hearing this this evening, and the CPC scheduled a special meeting this, this evening outside of their regular meeting times to hear this issue in particular, and the Housing Subcommittee met a couple of times. CPC has had a very thoughtful discussion of this issue, and I really appreciate the extra time and the thought they put into this. So, let's see, I'd like to just hand out, I apologize for coming to the meeting with a few changes, but because of the timeframe that we've been working on, that's where we are. And the changes, I don't believe you will think, you will find them accessible.
Thank you.
To the concept, original concept. They are in revision marks.
Thanks, Amy.
So, the, the MOU, as before, identifies the parcel. As you said, this is the Spring Bars Road parcel that was purchased at a town meeting in 2010 with CPC funds and with town funds that were, the CPC wanted to clarify that the town borrowing was later reimbursed through CPC funds at subsequent, through subsequent appropriations. Then there was a memorandum of understanding that was signed between the Board of Selectmen and the Community Preservation Committee in 2010 with regards to the use of this parcel. And the, one of the statements made in that understanding was that this parcel would be used in the future for community housing and recreation. This parcel is, of course, centrally located in the Little Pond Sewer Service Area, and use of this parcel for construction staging would be a benefit to the town as a whole because there will be still a great deal of traffic and a great deal of construction activity in the service area, but using a centrally located parcel would help reduce the amount of traffic outside the service area and crossing Route 28. The, the language here that was, that was revised relates to the CPC comments on the, on the housing future of, the potential housing future of the site. This temporary construction use for staging, I, I hope that it's obvious, does not affect the long-term use of this site, the long-term potential of use of this site for housing. It is noted that the LPSA project will provide a sewer connection, a lateral, for this property to which any future buildings on that site could be connected. And also, one of the terms of this MOU is that if the town does design and permit the placement of fill on the Spring Bars Road site, then the contractor could provide fill that becomes available for this project on that location. But that, of course, I want to obviously make it very clear that the contractor would not place any permanent fill on this site without the towns designing and permitting that placement. So, there are a number of conditions to the MOU. There are a couple of staging areas that are identified in the map. That's, the original map was in your, in your packet. The staging areas that are identified are, have been previously cleared sites within the, within this parcel, and they, they have existing access roads. The contractor would clear and maintain the access roads and the staging area as required for their use. So, there is some vegetation growth along those access roads, and there would be some clearing and some grading in order to get trucks on and off the site. The contractor would store construction materials on the site like pipe, like manholes, stone, and also excavated material on the site. Excavated, one of the changes that the CPC asked was that excavated material only be stored on staging area two, which is the site, the portion closer to Worcester Court. And one of the conditions here that has been expressed by a number of people is that no large mechanical equipment be kept overnight on this site, no refueling of equipment on this site. The duration is, the project duration is 26 months, so about two years from now, this, our need for use of the site would be over, and the contractor would restore the site to pre-existing conditions. Prior to the use of the site for staging, Robert Auer has agreed to take site photos and stake out the 100-foot buffer to the wetlands that are closing, closest to the staging areas, install erosion control. areas, install erosion control, which is silt fence and straw bales, at the 100-foot buffer to the wetland that is south of staging area one, as marked on your map. And they would conduct and provide to the Conservation Department and CPC a topographic survey which establishes the existing grade on the site for those two staging areas. They're not going to do a topographic survey of the entire site, but of the two staging areas that they're proposing to use in this work. The last addition of the CPC was that the, our Robert Auer will, of course, maintain the erosion control throughout the project. And the town has an environmental monitor for this project that was established, was a requirement of the Order of Conditions for the project as a whole. The town's engineer, GHD, was providing the environmental monitor. The environmental monitor will provide weekly updates project-wide to this Conservation Commission to document that the conditions, the Order of Conditions are being met. We have asked our environmental monitor to provide the same weekly update to the CPC regarding the conditions in this MOU, that they are being met through the life of this project. Lastly, as I mentioned previously, if the town does design and permit a placement of fill on this site, then the contractor would be willing to provide fill for the site from this project, as it's available from this project. The contractor is not proposing to place any permanent fill on there, on this is, if at the request of the town, that comes to fruition during the project.
And the reason for that is that when the commission did the report on this site, it was suggesting if there was going to be construction, that some fill would have to take place.
Correct.
And that's where that's kind of come from.
That's where that came, that's why that came up during the discussions, yes. So I have an additional version of that with the revision marks incorporated, but I thought you'd want to see the changes. I know also that a number of CPC members are here as well tonight, and they're obviously interested in the outcome as well. So, and a number of those CPC members are here as well. Thank you.
Questions from the board?
Sure. Is there any fencing around these sites?
The staging area, I want to make sure I get the names right. Staging area one has existing fencing around it. Staging area two has a gate at the entranceway. I'm not aware, I'm, there's not fencing around the area marked as staging area two.
Okay.
What is marked as, the reason it's marked as staging area two, as shown, is that's approximately where it's already disturbed, already been cleared. So there is not a fence around that at that time, but there is a gate at the entrance.
Okay, thank you.
Sam?
But Amy, there will be a silt fence erected, is that correct?
Yes, a silt, where shown on the plans, the silt fence is to prevent erosion from flowing towards, any erosion from moving toward the wetland. And the silt fence would be installed where shown on this plan, south of, on the southern end of staging area one.
My question went more towards attractive nuisance, safety, making sure folks weren't, you know, getting into there and perhaps getting hurt.
Okay.
But, and just a quick comment.
Yep.
You know, the idea of, you know, forethought with respect to the fill, I think is terrific.
Any other questions from the board? Are we prepared to move on?
Mr. Chairman, could I make one comment? On page two, the suggested changes on item number six, it seems to suggest that two separate reports are to be provided, one to a CPC staff person and a second one to the Conservation Commission. I would just suggest that the environmental monitor report that's going automatically to the Conservation Commission, a copy simply be given to the CPC rather than a standalone update and report needed to be provided as a separate item. So there'd be a single report prepared, and they'd be copied with it.
The, we, I think that's a reasonable change. I think that we would want, the CPC had expressed interest in the particular requirements of this MOU being monitored. So if we report on that to the, we can report, add a section to report on that to both the Conservation Commission and the CPC.
I just would encourage avoiding multiple reports to multiple entities, that it's just going to complicate this.
Okay.
So if it can be simplified in that regard, I would recommend that to this board in the spirit of working together.
And that could be handled by just asking that the report that goes to the Conservation Commission include aspects of the staging areas? And so then it would be covering, which is important, that we don't even have to change the wording here, as long as the report that goes to Conservation Commission covers the same issue?
Excellent.
I think that's what they're going to want anyway.
Right. Any other questions?
Chairman, if you have any other questions, may I make a few comments?
Okay.
Good evening, I'm Ralph Herbst, the chairman of the Community Preservation Committee. A short period of time ago, the Community Preservation Committee was approached about this possibility. And it took a monumental amount of work in a very short period of time, not the least of which was Amy Lowell from the town. But our Subcommittee met with Amy to discuss the possibilities of this, going over in detail the MOUs from the past and also the current one. Patty Haney, Ken Buckland, and Peter Crowell put in a tremendous amount of time in about two weeks. And then our administrator, Carol Sutherland, worked tirelessly to make this all happen. And I'd like to thank them for that, and the town needs to thank them for that. And then all the CPC members agreed to meet tonight, just before this meeting, to discuss this and vote on this. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Patty Haney, who's the chairman of our Housing Subcommittee and who has shepherded this through up to this point.
Just need to check, we do have a hearing scheduled for 7:30 on the logistics of postponing that. I think by regulation, we actually have to start that hearing, so we're going to have to put this discussion on hold and move to our public hearing, as posted, that we have a 7:30 wetland hearing, and then we'll have to come back to the discussion on Spring Bars Road. So, next item is 7:30 PM, we have a wetland hearing. This is for, to reconstruct an existing bulkhead. And I need to read out this in public hearing notice. The Falmouth Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing under Section 240-77 Wetland Regulations of the Zoning Bylaws of the Town of Falmouth on Monday, June 29, 2015, at 7:30 PM, in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, in the application of Daniel and Lisa Gorin for the proposed reconstruction of the existing bulkhead in the same location as the old wood bulkhead. A new vinyl sheet pile will be finished with a wood wall cap located at Lot 159 and Lot 160 Seapit Road, East Falmouth. Area affected is Seapit River. Interested parties may review the file on this hearing at the Selectmen's office. This was published on both Friday, June 19th and Friday, June 26th, in the Falmouth Enterprise. All right, from the applicant. Do we have anyone from the applicant? All right, well, I'm going to say that they have lost their opportunity, we're going to go back to the, I'll take a motion that we tabled this and go back to the Spring Bars Road project.
So move.
Okay, a motion to table it, and we'll come back to it later. Thank you.
Ms. Amy.
Hello, glad to be up with you guys. Just wanted to say that working with Amy was very good. We also, the CPC worked with the neighbors, and that resulted in asking for the environmental monitor to keep an eye on the Spring Bars Road property, and with Jen McKay from Concom, which made us look at what the use for each parcel would be, to be sure that no runoff went downhill into the sensitive areas. So that was really good, because they know stuff we don't know. Just want to say that in 2010, town meeting voted to purchase this property on Spring Bars Road, and the parcel in question was property to be bound by permanent deed restriction. And the MOU with the town from five years ago states that there will be a permanent restriction on that property. That has not happened yet. If we are using this property to stage for the sewer, which I think is a good idea, and we're saying it's to further the cause of affordable housing, I think it would be wise to put a restriction on that property, a permanent restriction for community housing. That's just my opinion. But, thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other questions from the board? Anyone else from the public? Okay, Mr. Finney?
Mark Finney, Precinct 6. I heard during the description of this, they said that they didn't want to park any vehicles there. I just want to point out that a lot of the streets in that, that they're going to be in the neighborhood where they're constructing the sewers are very narrow. So that's going to leave, the only option that's going to give them is to leave their equipment in the streets. I think that if you could amend this and allow them, in cases where it would be an undue impedance to the traffic in the neighborhood, they'd be allowed to pack their trucks there, just to make it easier for the traffic to flow. And I remind you that it was a concrete plant, and there were cement trucks and all kinds of vehicles parked there previously, so I don't think that it would be any misuse. Thanks.
I believe there are plans for the traffic to, the equipment to be parked elsewhere on paved areas. Amy, do you want to comment on that?
The contractor is pursuing additional staging areas.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I make one additional comment, please? I do want to thank CPC Chairman Ralph for your excellent leadership in moving this all forward. It came about, as you noted, fairly expeditiously. I want to thank Patty Haney for chairing the Subcommittee and all her extraordinary work in this area, and all the members of the CPC. It was a, my pleasure to come before you and have some, participate in a partial way in that discussion, so I thank you for all your accommodations in working with the board on this this evening. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding as been given to us tonight with the changes? So move.
Second.
We have motion to second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? The ayes have it. Thank you very much to the CPC, and we will get that signed with a new copy that we have from Amy. All right, a motion to take off the table, the wetland hearing?
A representative, seriously, speak to it.
About the revision marks accepted?
Right. Great, thank you.
He's a representative.
He's a representative from the, Daniel and Lisa Gorin here yet?
I'm not going to take it off the table.
Continue.
Okay.
I guess we'll continue this until, probably may not be till June 20th or June 27th, which is July 20th.
Unless you want to leave it on the table, in case they do show up later.
We're leaving it on the table for now. 7:45, as we discussed, our next hearing. I'm not sure if we have enough time to actually have a discussion on the schedule for continuation of the use of Spring Bars Road, which is our next item on our agenda.
Would you want to consider three and four on administrative orders, and then go back to two potentially, Mr. Chairman? Those might be a little quicker.
So item number three is to approve a commemorative plaque for Linda Whitehead, Falmouth Town Band. This is going to be, we have a description of it, please?
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to be before you. I'm Levita Studley, Director of the Falmouth Town Band, and as you know, in the summer season article from The Enterprise, the history of the Falmouth Town Band was listed. There have been musicians since the early 1900s making music here in Falmouth for its listeners. In over 50 years, the band as it is now has been performing at the Band Shell area, just in a different place, and that article will describe all of that. We have the amateur and professional musicians, and their ages range from 11 to 87, and we've had someone who was 93, matter of fact, just a couple of years ago. They range from doctors and nurses and teachers, students and retirees, to mention just a few of their occupations. The Falmouth Town Band brass, as you know, plays before the town meetings and plays for the lighting of the, at the Village Green for the lighting of the Christmas tree. Lynn Whitehead has been playing in that band for 40 of those 50 years. The Falmouth Town Band members would like to recognize Lynn Whitehead for her 30 years as Director of the Falmouth Town Band by placing a plaque on the band's storage door at the back of the pavilion. We appreciate her dedication and expertise leading the band for all those years, her participation as principal clarinetist 10 years before that, in helping provide a safe stage in which all artists of Falmouth can perform. I want to thank you for allowing me to talk to you, and I appreciate your time and consideration. Thank you.
A question.
Yes.
What is the size of the plaque?
Six by eight.
The awards at Cape Cod is putting that together. We're looking at eight by 10.
Eight by 10.
Brass plaque.
Very nice.
Any further discussion?
And very well deserved, I might say. Linda's done a great job.
She has.
Entertainer, motion to approve the commemorative plaque?
I move approval of the plaque for the band shell.
Taken. Motion to second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? The ayes have it.
Thank you for this and all that you do for Falmouth.
Thanks.
Thank you, Levita. Can I make a comment? My family has played in the town band for years and years. My wife still plays in it, and it's just an important cultural aspect of Falmouth for many people like my family, to be able to participate in that activity. And I know many families that are like our family. And I would say that the support that my children got coming up to the public schools, thanks to the role models that our music teachers provide, has just been an outstanding influence. So my, I was, I can tell you, I was very disappointed when Levita Studley retired and Lynn Whitehead retired, and then years before that, Joe Studley, who was my son's high school band teacher, retired. They've all been terrific people to influence my son's, my children's character.
Well, I want to say that Linda gave many of us the opportunity to lead the band, too. And that was a great experience, I must say. I'd be happy to do it.
Item four is to approve the request to transfer funds in the amount of $336, $629 from the snow and ice salary account to the snow and ice expense account, you know, meaning a member of town meeting that we made the transfer to create, to cover the deficit. And this is just to move it over to pay for the actual materials.
So move. Second.
We have motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? All right, we're going to move on to our next hearing, it's 7:45. This is a notice, as he wrote, given to a public hearing to be held in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, Town Hall, Falmouth, Mass., on Monday, June 29, 2015, at 7:45, on the
application of Savon Hattam LLC for permission to park five fuel delivery trucks, each truck with a storage capacity of 12,000 gallons of gasoline fuel, with a total of 60,000 gallons to be located at parking facility at Lot 30, Thomas B. Landers Road, Falmouth, Mass. And this was published in the paper, June 19, 2015. From the applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Hal Chuba. I'm a consulting engineer with offices at 112 State Road in Dock, Massachusetts, and I'm here representing Mr. Hattam on his application. Basically, we're here for license to store 60,000-gallon gasoline for five fuel trucks to be parked at the facility. The project is located off of Thomas B. Landers Road. It's located in the light industrial zone. The fuel business is an allowed business by right, by a special permit from the zoning board. We did appear in front of the zoning board, we have approval from the zoning board, we have approval from the planning board, we met with the fire department, they had some conditions, we have their approval. So basically, we're at the building permit stage right now, and we need to get the license before we do that. I do have some rendering of the project, I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have, technical question, or, I know you have a long agenda, but I'm here for, to answer any questions.
I'd like this to be rendered.
Could you, is this the plan you have? Could you, is this the plan you have?
I, I do. I have several plans. I have a rendering of what the project would look like. I can grab an eagle probably, or if this is easy, I can hold the board. So basically, we'll use the site to park five trucks. We propose even 5,000 square foot steel building.
Thank you.
With two bay garages that need opening. 5,000 square foot steel building, some landscape improvements with the parking and drainage, and a portion of the building would encompass the offices for Mr. Hatum. It's only associated with the business. It's not a separate business, so we went through the whole site plan review with, with site planning and the engineer. The town engineer looked at the drainage. We do have a complete drainage system on site to capture and treat any spill, spillage in case of a spillage. We have a shut off, emergency shut off valve on the system with, that would prevent the gasoline or whatever, if there's any spillage from going into the groundwater. And as I said, there'll be some landscape lighting improvements, all the, the building is within the site, the setbacks, there's no variances for the project, all the, we comply with all zoning regulations and we're here for the license, basically.
And two of the trucks will be stored in the building and three outside?
No, outside, but there's two, two bay garage, just mainly for light maintenance. The maintenance of the, the trucks will be on, on a separate facility because by law, you're not allowed to work on maintenance, maintenance or the routine maintenance will be basically maybe oil changes, checking the tie, the, the pressure on the tires, maybe the brake lines and safety, basically just safety components of.
Okay. Ms. Moffitt?
What is the purpose of 60,000 gallons being stored?
Okay, this, well, the purpose is not, there's no purpose of the 60. This is how it came. This is a unique project. When I met with the fire department, I explained that Mr. Hatum is in the transportation business. So what happens, the trucks will go to the site, he'll get a call the day before, he has to deliver five deliveries, whatever, all over the state. They would go to the terminal and they load the, the fuel from Boston or Providence. They would deliver the fuel and come back to the site and park the trucks at night. But from permitting purposes, the fire department was, after talking to the state fire marshal, they would assume that the trucks has gasoline on them, so this, this, this is why we're here. Basically, the trucks won't have gasoline on them, but they said you have to get a license to store gasoline, and this is the case, and we're here for this, so. But each truck has the capacity of 12,000 gallons, and basically, we have five trucks to be parked there, so they said you need to get a license for 60,000 gallons.
So you're not storing?
We're not storing, but...
You just simply have the trucks?
We do have the trucks. I mean, the trucks has the capacity, the, the, for safety measures, the, the fire department went over it and said, this is what you need to do, so that the building has to be equipped with a, with an automatic fire sprinkler system by codes, and you have to do this and this. I said, we'll do it. But basically, that's why we're here. There's no underground storage tanks or anything. I mean, the, the trucks have the capacity to carry 12,000 gallons each.
But we don't need to know that if you don't have anything in the trucks.
The trucks may not be completely empty, and so it's just covering the bases of...
I, I think I agree on that. And just saying, so we'll do this and then we'll, we'll permit this as, as a storage facility and, and everybody's covered, basically. And the building would be designed to accommodate that, so.
Mr. Patterson?
Would there ever be the need for you to transfer fuel from one truck to another?
No, absolutely not.
Okay. So is that restricted in your permit?
You know, I, Mr. Hatum is here, he's probably more familiar with the business, but I've never, usually, you don't transfer fuel from truck to truck. You go to the terminal, you load your truck, you unload it, then you go back empty. You know, absolutely, it would never happen, it's not...
Maybe to follow up on Ms. Moffitt's question, is there anything to prevent it becoming a storage facility? By the license that we are approving, by everything you've gone through, and is there anything that would prevent you in a year from now saying, you know, actually, we're going to make it a storage facility, and we don't have to do anything else to get permission for that? And if the intention right now is not that, but it sounds like the licensing or granting would allow that...
It would allow it. I think this is, this is the way we were told to proceed with the project, and I think if you'd be covered if you say, yes, you can allow it, rather than say, no, you're not allowed to do this.
Right, but that, that means we need to be considering the application for this to be a storage facility, because that's what we're...
I, I, I think so. That's, that's why we're here, so basically.
And we're not really presenting it as a storage facility for five trucks. We're approving a storage facility for 60,000 gallons.
Correct. And if there's any change, same with the zoning board, that they said if there's any increase and you'll have to, that could be one of the conditions on your, on your permits or, or license, if there's any change to the capacity.
If the trucks will not have fuel while they're there on the, on the property, when will they have fuel in them? When they move somewhere or...
When on the road, mostly.
Pardon? When they're on the road?
Yeah, when they're on the road, yeah. They'll have fuel on them. But in case, for some reason, I can't tell why, in case the trucks had gasoline on them and they came to the site legally by zone, by, you know, we're, we're covered, we're not saying, you know, this is, and, and safety is the issue too, so the building is designed and the site is designed to accommodate the trucks with the fuel on them. So this way, we all feel good, we can sleep at night, so.
Any questions?
One more question. From this Thomas B. Landers Road, how close is the residential area?
I, I have an aerial mapping. This is the site, this is the surrounding. It's all industrial, basically.
None of this is residential?
None of that residential.
And, and what are these buildings, other buildings here? You don't know, it's just an area?
Some of them have fuel similar, most of them, I mean, you can see this is a huge building. I mean, you can see the scale of our building compared to the other buildings. It's, it's an industrial area, it's an industrial zone. I think this is the right place for this use. That's what I'm saying. That's why we, it's allowed by right, but it's a special permit from the zoning board of appeals. But there's, there's no close by, I don't see any, you know, residential within, I'll say 300 feet or something, you know.
Mr. Patterson, your question?
Yeah, could, could you describe the fire suppression system you have in, in your facility?
The fire suppression system, I'm, I'm, I'm a civil engineer and architect by trade, I'm not a fire, I had hired another consultant to design the fire suppression system. And it's designed for building codes and, but it will cover the entire building and offices. A portion of the building has, like I said, has a mezzanine on the second floor, it's all offices related to the business, and, and the, the base will be all covered 100% per building codes. I'm, I'm not sure, it's a wet system, if this is what you're...
It's wet.
Yeah, it's a wet system. And we will install a hydrant at the intersection of the driveway as stipulated by the fire department and so.
Thank you.
I hope I answered your, your question on...
Well, yeah, obviously, the fact that it's a petroleum product that you've got, I mean, you're going to need some kind of a specialized, you know, fire suppression system.
Right.
But I assume you've passed the fire, fire department regulations, so...
Yes, it'll, it'll be designed for building and fire codes, that's, that's the answer.
Ms. Ren?
And, and if we were to allow it with the restriction that the, there would be no fuel storage other than in the trucks, that would still serve your purpose, correct?
Absolutely.
I'll make the motion to approve subject to that limitation.
Are we, are we going to still have to take public comment on the hearing, so? Okay. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone who would like to speak against the application? Does anyone on the board have any further questions? Okay. Do you have a question to answer, for or against, or just a question?
Neither.
Okay.
Nancy Hayward, West Falmouth, Precinct 5. I'm used to driving along Thomas Landers Road. I see you have Lot 3. Can any more definitive statement be made of the location of this? I know where the dump is, I know where Blacksmith's Shock Road is, I know where...
It's across from Technology Park.
It's across from Technology Park?
Yes.
That's a pretty big area.
Across from the drive.
They're also showing the school buses that are located on the opposite side of the street in that picture right there. Does that help? There's a first student has a big, you know, operation center there for the school buses that are used for the Center to Cape Cod. Does that help?
No, it doesn't. The social security office, the hockey rink.
To further the pass, pass the, pass the hockey rink.
On the other side.
On the other side.
Closer to the dump. Yep. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
I'll move to close the hearing.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to close the, secondly, the hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, the hearing's closed. What action would the board like to take?
I'd like to move approval subject to there being no storage other than in the trucks.
Second.
Do we have another facility similar to this in Falmouth that we, that has been approved by this board or by the Selectman? Is this the first one in Falmouth that has storage of this type?
Storage of tanker trucks?
I don't know of any other.
I'm not sure.
Well, I, I don't know definitively, but obviously, first student has to fill its buses, and it's got that facility across the way. We must have gone through a similar permitting process to allow them to have large storage to fuel their, their buses. That's likely to be diesel fuel, though, and not gasoline, and there would be a difference.
And this is no storage of tanks? And so that's, you know, where...
No, but if it's in the trucks and it's starting to leak somewhere, it's just, it's just an incredible amount.
Well, there are a number of businesses on, on Thomas Landers Road that all have trucks. There's this cement company that has, you know, number, huge number of trucks.
But I'm thinking 60,000 gallons, I guess. There's just, that's, that's what I'm saying. They've got five trucks that could have 12,000 in each that possibly would not be filled, but possibly could be filled. And then it's storage, and it's five trucks that could be stored with 60,000 gallons. I think it's...
Well, you may want to ask the applicant about the spill containment plan. That would have been part of the CBA permit, with the site drainage, if there's a spill containment plan, what that is.
Are you willing to entertain...
I'm sorry?
...information outside the, we closed the hearing, are you, do you want the information from the applicant?
He did mention that he did have that.
This is deliberation.
This is deliberation.
Right.
He, he did mention it already, Heather.
I thought, it's in the plan.
They have containment that's approved by the fire department and the permitting...
A spill containment plan? What is the plan?
We don't go back to the applicant at this point, it's discussion.
Okay, all right.
But he explained it's a containment.
Okay. All right.
We have a motion and second to approve with the condition that there would not be gasoline storage besides what's in the tanks. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have four in approval and Ms. Moffitt against.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Again, we'll see if we have anyone from Daniel Nisa Gorin for the Seapet Road application for existing bulkhead. Okay. We'll move on to our next item on our agenda, is the discussion of the vehicle for hire regulations. Mr. Suso, you will lead us off with this one?
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the board is aware, we've received a number of reports, it's been also in the local media regarding the vehicle for hire process, and that in the last, oh, year, year or two, a new entrant has appeared, frequently known as Uber, but it, that follows a different paradigm for providing a vehicle for hire services. And we've had a number of inquiries about it, as have had a number of other communities. This public hearing would be to, for the board to take any comments from interested parties regarding your existing regulations, the new apparent entrant into the vehicle for hire business, and you would take that under advisement for potentially considering any changes to your regulations at a later date and time. So this would be strictly for information gathering from those who have a, are parties of interest in the vehicle for hire business.
As this is a public hearing, I will read the notice. The Board of Selectmen of the Town of Falmouth will hold a public hearing as authorized by Chapter 65, Section 11 of the Code of Falmouth to solicit comments from the public on amendments to Chapter 280 of said code to vehicles for hire, and specifically to amend Chapter 280 to include the regulation of other vehicles for hire, sometimes referred to as Uber, Lyft, or some other nomenclature. This public hearing will be held on Monday, June 29th, 2015, 8:00 p.m. in the Selectman's Hearing Room, Town Hall, Falmouth, Mass. And I'll just reiterate that what Mr. Suso said is that we will not be making any decisions tonight. This is a chance to hear public comment, and if we, the board so is interested, we may make changes to the regulations, have another hearing to discuss those, and then make a vote on that. And that hearing would be posted and would be at least a month away from now. But at this point, to start the public comment, and there will be opportunity for public comment if we do come up with other regulations. So is there anyone who'd like to make public comment on this issue?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Paul Moore, and I am the owner of Falmouth Taxi. Been the owner of Falmouth Taxi since 2008, and I'd like to start off by thanking Mr. Suso and Lieutenant DeCosta and the Chief of Police for, for taking this up and having this discussion. This is a very important issue for us, being the transportation industry. Tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of all the other independent taxi operators. Al Jones is here from Alvis Taxi, Chris Hazelton is here from A&amp;A Taxi, and Ben Trippken, who's been ill from All Seasons Taxi, also really appreciates the town looking at this. As it stands right now, Uber is an unregulated business, and what we're looking for is basically a level playing field. We're not looking to change any bylaws or any regulation. I know it's a complicated situation where we'd sit back and say, enforce the bylaw that's on the books now. This industry is very heavily regulated and for very, very good reason, and it's for the safety of the public, and for the people that get in these cabs and our seasonal, our seasonal people that come and visit our town. We currently go through a background check for our drivers. We have three inspections a year, safety inspections on our cars, for very, very good reason. And it's, it's burdensome, and it costs us time and it costs us money. But I would say to you this, there can never be enough regulation in our industry for protecting the safety of the public. The benefits, the beneficiaries of the regulations, as I said, is the community and our seasonal guests. We have meters that get inspected every year. We have to have a certain limit of insurance. We have to have our taxis labeled, identified. Currently, Uber has none of that. I think they have a plan for background checks, but I'm not sure. And another big piece for leveling the playing field, because these are, these are costs associated to our business, is insurance. If you look in the back of your insurance policy when it comes, comes due, you will see on the very last page that vehicles for hire are not covered on a personal auto policy. Uber runs on a personal auto, auto policy, we're not allowed to do that. We, we would be asking to level the playing field that, not to necessarily change any regulation, but to... but to enforce our bylaw. And I would say that, how you do that, I don't know, but bring them into the party. Tell them they can come in and regulate them, just like we need to be regulated. I've thought a lot about this, and it's a very personal issue because I know the gentleman that, I don't even call them competitors, because we work together and they care about this community. We believe that we have a serious public service and one we take very seriously in taking care of the people in this community. If you check out an Uber app tomorrow night about midnight, which most of you might be asleep, you'll see a half a dozen cars going over the bridge. You can watch them. You can see them. Uber's a ride-sharing program that's just an app. That's all it is. You can pull up your app and get a ride anywhere you want, if they're, if they're in town. We're finding right now that they haven't been, it's been petering off a little bit because I think, I don't think it's a big enough population. I think Uber's driven by heavily populated cities. I know they're struggling with it. There's been a lot of communities that have banned them. I don't, I don't, I don't think that's the way to go. I don't think that's what needs to be done. Competition is something we embrace, but also I've done things with my company. I don't think I can compete with them on a global issue, but I think locally we can. I have my own app now, and that's a platform that I think the millennials and almost everybody expects things instantly and they use their phone. So an app is, is something that was necessary in my business, I felt. But the insurance piece, I think, is very, very important. It's always the insurance, the inspections, three a year, one from the state and two from the town. So we do it every six months and then the one wherever it falls on your sticker. So, you know, I've struggled with this and I was wondering what I was going to do, how I would handle it. I've had a couple instances. I'll give you an example of some frustration is I bought a new car recently and had the bubble put on, and I made an appointment with Locust Street Sign to have it letered up. That took a week and a half. So I put the car into play, and a concerned citizen was worried about the car not being identified as a cab. So they took the cab off the road. I make a phone call on Uber and nothing, and I understand it's a, it's a, something that the town has to grasp. I mean, changing the regulation, I don't know, I know that's part of the discussion today, and I'm not sure, I'm not sure you need to do that. But that's just my, my personal opinion. I think if, I don't know how you enforce a bylaw. It's there. It's in our community. I have to have taxi plates. I have to have a letter. I have to be identified. I have to have the bubble. I have to have the meter. And it's a regulated meter, as you know, and Uber has what they call surge pricing, which I cannot do, my independent counterparts cannot do. And what the surge pricing is, it's time, year, it's time of day, it's situations. Fourth of July weekend, they have a triple fare. We don't do that. And we, I'm not asking for that either. I don't think it's, I don't think it's right. I think it's gouging, and I think that's part of the unregulated piece that we, we don't think is fair. And I want to continue to work with the town and be proactive on it and help in any way I can. I know my colleagues feel the same, and I appreciate Mr. Suso and Lieutenant DeCosta and the Chief of Police. This is, for us, it's, I think it's a very serious public safety issue, and I thank you for your time. If anyone has any questions, I'd be glad to answer for you.
I do have a question. I did look through the regulations, Paul, and I did, do you require that your drivers have a criminal offense of, is it court?
It's part of the hack license that-
It is.
Every driver has to have.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Ms. Moffett?
If we needed more taxi service, I mean, do you feel this town is served by the taxi service we have now?
I feel strongly that it's not an underserved community, and if you remember back in '08, before I took it over, when the previous owners had some problems, I know the town administrator was inundated with phone calls. And I don't believe, and you can tell me if it's different, I don't think that's the case now, that you're inundated with taxi service not being up to par, but sometimes you do have to wait for a cab because it is a cab. I believe, I believe it's not an underserved community, and also the most vulnerable part of this, or the most vulnerable is our elderly. I know my colleagues and myself, I'm at the hospital multiple, multiple times a day and doing hospital runs and doctor's appointments. I can't even count. We do it, you know, we do over 200 runs a day in the slow season. And don't quote me on this, and I think I get this right, 65% of our elderly population over the age of 60 do not have a smartphone. So, I mean, I guess that's good for us because they can't get an Uber. Right. But we, you know, and that's another thing that they could potentially, if we became the Wild West and no one had to have permits, they'd be an underserved part of the population. I don't think that would be good, and I'm certainly not thinking that would happen.
Do you know at all how many cabs are available to the people in Falmouth in the summertime?
How many cabs are revealed?
Actually, yes.
I have 14 permits and there's, and there's 17, there's 17 out there. If Falmouth Taxi has 14 of them, and there's three independents.
17 total.
Right.
Any other questions for Mr. Moore? Ms. Maron?
Are Ubers in Falmouth right now?
Yeah. I don't, I don't have my app on, but Wednesday was tonight, Monday night? Probably not.
But generally during a week, would you find-
No, what they do is, what they've been doing is Uber, they, actually last summer, they wanted me to stage six cars in Hyannis, and I obviously didn't do that. So they're, they're trying to get, they're trying to populate down here, and they're paying for their gas to get them down here. Most of them are coming over the bridge from Boston. And it's been Friday and Saturday nights, but what I'm seeing is it's starting to peter off. What happens with Uber is it's their own car, it's their own gas, it's their own insurance, and they get 80% of 80% of the fare. 60%.
But we're not late to the party right now. This is the time to be looking at this. They're not all over town yet.
Correct.
Thank you.
Correct.
Any other testimony comments?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name's Al Jones. I'm the owner of Elvis Taxi. I'm an independent taxi driver. I have three or four workers working for me. I mentioned insurance, okay? I mean, you guys are going to be just shocked, but we have to pay $4,000 a year insurance for these cabs, okay? And we're talking $800 down at the end of May and 300 bucks a month for 11 months, okay? And before May, we haven't made anybody. I mean, this year was terrible with all the snow, as we all know. And, you know, I've been driving cab for 12 years, and when I get the customers in the car, I consider myself as an ambassador to Falmouth. I show them this, I show them that, I show them this, I show them that. And if it's a $20 ride, they'll give you a $5 tip, and that's why I'm in business, you know? And I agree with everything Paul said. Thank you. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to comment?
My name's Chris Hazelton. I'm the owner operative AA Taxi. Been in business since 1989. My father started it, and I took it over 17 years ago when he was no longer here. I like my business. I like the job. I like to meet people. I like to travel. Just, it's a good job. It's a hard job. It's not easy. It's not easy to do every day, day in, day out. And we all help each other out with the taxi business. If one guy can't do a job, he'll refer the customer to that other company, and we have good cooperation. And I can't see Uber being in a cooperation situation like we are. We're a small town here. It's a small, close-knit group, just like the restaurants. It's short seasons, very short, goes by really quickly, summer's over. And I don't think Uber has, I don't think it's right for them to just come in and just do what they want to do and then just leave. We were here, we're the people who serve the town. We, we're good drivers. Most of us are good drivers, and we try to do a good job. And I just hope the board makes a decision to exclude Uber from working in this area. And if it's possible, I would, I'd like to see that.
Anything else to say? Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to make a comment? Chief Dunn?
Good evening. How are you? This is a problem that, or issue that has come up all over the state, other towns, other chiefs are dealing with it. What I've done, we've had some complaints, and we're addressing it with the manager, and what I've done is I've tasked Captain Reed. I'll let him speak because he's got all the data that we've done and what we think we're allowed to do without regulations right now and where it probably should go. So I'll let him do the speaking.
Good evening and thank you. I'm Captain Reed from the Police Department. As the Chief Dunn said, just to start with, I'd like to say that I'm only going to address this from a public safety perspective. I don't think it's appropriate for me to talk about the concept of fairness. That's for you good folks to decide. From that public safety perspective, I do think there are some important considerations for you good folks to think about. As these, as these cab operators have pointed out to you, they do come in for background checks of all their operators. We do come in for background checks at the Police Department and license the individual cab drivers. They do have vehicle safety inspections. They do have insurance coverages, and with the privately owned vehicles and the Uber business model, I don't know those implications. I have not looked into that. But these are consumer protections that are written into our bylaw to protect the citizens, and I just think worthy of, worthy of note in this discussion. The bylaw as it's currently drafted in our review, we believe does allow us to regulate Uber cabs. However, there's very little guidance in it for exactly what that regulation would look Currently, we define taxis, we define liveries, we define limousines. An Uber cab is something different from all of them. A taxi is marked and metered and picks up curbside fares. A livery is unmarked, un-metered, I'm sorry, marked and un-metered, and a limousine is unmarked and un-metered and doesn't pick up curbside fares. Also, with the taxis that are most akin to what an Uber vehicle is, they, they have the meter base, but the Uber cab is a GPS-based fare system. So it's, it's totally separate from anything that's defined in our bylaws right now. Some, some communities, as the Chief said, are trying to get in front of this. Many communities are waiting to see if the state's going to make a decision on it. I don't know, you know, what's going on in the different communities, but we have looked at some language, some other communities that have incorporated into their bylaws, and we can look at, you know, putting together some, some reason, presenting it to Mr. Suso until you good folks are consideration at the appropriate time. But from the police, it's just a public safety consideration. We think that there are some concerns, but our bylaw as it's currently drafted doesn't give us the sort of direction to do that type of, do that type of enforcement, regulation.
Captain Reed, a question. There was a proposal, well, at least the thought of providing a petty cab to provide service around here. Do we need to kind of broaden the definition of what vehicle for hire might be? Is that something we might want to entertain? Or do you think we've got, there's excursion buses too, for instance, and I'm not sure they fall within your definition of the vehicles. I'm just throwing that out as something that, is that something we should be looking at along with regulating Uber? Because potentially these other types of vehicles could operate much the way Uber operates.
I, I hear your question. Don't know if I'm completely qualified to answer it, but I think that that's exactly what I'm driving at, is sort of adding some definitions within our bylaw to sort of try to keep up with the changes in technology and changes in platforms.
Any questions for the, for the sophomores?
Thank you.
Any other comment? Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Paul Moore, Falmouth Taxi. I would hope that this, that our community wouldn't wait for the state. That could, that could take years. There's been communities all over the country that have taken leadership roles in it, and I think one of the tough areas is Uber is winning suits or cases against towns and communities that ban them. What they did in the Hamptons was they let them in. By letting them in, essentially is banning them, but you're letting them in, you're not banning them. And I hope that if there's a committee that's going to be together and anything that we could do to help from an expertise standpoint, or if there's going to be any subcommittee or anything, I'd volunteer to be on that. The other thing to note, what we have to do, is we have to operate 24 hours a day, and we have to have an office. These are a couple of things that I, I left out, and I think that are very important too, is to the bylaw, because that's another added expense for, for hire vehicle. Thank you.
Ms. Moore, maybe you can clarify for me. As I understand, within our bylaw regulations, that's where all these things exist. And if an Uber cab were listed as a vehicle for hire within our bylaws, they would be held to the same standard, which would do the leveling of the playing field you're looking for.
Absolutely. Bring them into the party and regulate them.
Any other comments at this time? Okay. I don't think we're closing the hearing. We're moving forward and make some decision in the future as to what, how we might change the bylaw.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do you want to call Goran anymore?
Do we have anyone from the Gorans here on their bulkhead? I think at this time, we're going to go ahead and ask for continuance. I don't think the 13th, July 13th is a good date for it because we'll be doing a Betterman hearing then. So at this time, let's continue until a time specific of July 27th, which is our next regular meeting, and for purpose of time, we'll just say at 7:30.
Do you have a question mark here for a joint meeting with the planning board?
It was going to be-
So later then?
It's really time that we, that we have that too. The joint meeting.
So what would be the next week?
Is there another date?
August 10th?
August 10th.
All right.
I'll move that it be continued to August 10th.
At 7:30?
At 7:30.
Okay. We have motion and a second. Ms. Moran, Mr. Patterson, to continue that hearing to August 10th at 7:30. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None in the ayes have it. All right, we're moving back to our special events.
Are we not going back to number two under administrative orders?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, you're right. Under administrative orders, now to discuss consideration of the future use of the Zero Spring Bars Road for affordable housing and what kind of schedule we want to operate on.
Mr. Chairman, could I just make one comment?
Absolutely.
The board will recall you'd received a communication from CPC Chair Ralph Herbst a month ago regarding a request to come before this board and discuss the Spring Bars Road property, community housing project. And the board may wish to discuss potentially entertaining that request and beyond if you would care to. But that was a formal request that you received within the past month.
Well, I was just going to say, I mean, I think it's time that we have that discussion, but I think we have to plan for it. I don't think that we have a plan in front of us right now to have the discussion about Spring Bars and where it's going to go. Now that we've given Mr. Our a couple of years to use the property, it gives us really the time that we will need to bring the community together, the CPC and other groups who are interested. And I think it's, it's a site that we, that this board has talked about previously. I think it goes back to 2010 that I can remember. I think we had some discussion about using that site for affordable housing back then. But I think we need to have a, we need to have a plan in front of us that we can talk from, and maybe that's something that we-
Do you think it would be appropriate to at least have one of the items on our agenda for our joint meeting with the planning board? Or do you think it's better- Or do you think it's better to...
No, I think that's a very good idea. In fact, I happen to have a couple of conversations with a couple of people on the planning board too, and I think they would be very interested that we take that up jointly, because they have, they have certain concerns about the site, they have certain ideas about the site, and I think working together is a good idea.
Would the appropriate tactic be to invite the CPC to be there? Sam, you were there as a representative, what do you think the CPC would, how do you think they would want to be involved in this?
Well, I'm going to suggest at least a possible way of moving forward, and it's really, I've been discussing this with Julian and Heather, you know, affordable housing, how do we deal with this big issue that just seems to pop up here and there as 40Bs are brought forth for permitting and comment? And I think it's Heather's idea that maybe a formal working group that represents the planning board and CPC and the selectmen, am I putting words in your mouth?
Yeah, I think...
Oh, excuse me. All right, well, I'm going to suggest anyway, because I thought that might be a good way to move forward, and begin to frame the issues that are associated with it, and have that working group take back their ideas or collect the ideas from the various boards and committees, so that we can consolidate that and present it to the Board in a way that we can have a discussion and try to do the trade-offs that would be required to make some kind of a judgment about such a progress, a project.
I think there's a lot of merit to that idea, because I know the CPC has already put so much work into this to begin with, but I also know there is a lot of work that still needs to be done on, and I don't think it's at the point where we can really have a discussion of this Board, of the planning board and the CPC, without some work behind the scenes of a task force like that. I think it's a very good idea. And if we had two representatives from each group, and maybe, I think we'd also want to keep the, our housing group in there as part of that also.
Sure.
And maybe we could draft a...
Issue statement?
Well, I was just thinking, even just who was going to be on it for our 13th meeting, it could be a little bit of our business meeting on the July 13th at our betterment hearing, at the end of that, we are going to have some time for our business, to at least by then have a list of who we'd like to have on the task force, whether it be someone from the housing, someone from planning, someone from CPC, and not have it be a bylaw or a charter-appointed committee, but just a task force that we appoint.
Right.
And I think that we should really consider the fact that affordable housing in all of its pieces is major, and for every town, and for our town as well. And I'm not suggesting that we hire somebody necessarily to be the so-called affordable housing czar, or whatever you want to call it, but we really should have a plan as a community as to how we're going to move forward on that. And I think that, that is, I think, an agenda when we get the people, the various people together who've been working on housing all these years, is to come up with an agenda and how are we going to move it forward? Where, how, who, the whole thing.
Are we okay?
It's, it really needs to be done.
I think planning would want to participate in that, so it's a great subject for upcoming meetings.
Are we okay with sort of taking both tasks, to have a task force to look at specific this project, but also have it be an agenda item for our joint meeting with the planning board?
That's good. I think planning might want to speak on the task force idea as well.
Okay. I don't want to delay things too much, though, but...
When is that meeting?
The 27th.
So it's not a delay.
July?
Yep. Because I was just...
That's far away.
We actually have not scheduled that with, it's a question mark, joint meeting, we have not scheduled it with the planning board, but I think, certainly it is, there are not things that we would like to discuss, and we'll decide somehow that can work out, and we'll have that in a agenda item if we do schedule that meeting.
Right.
All right.
Yes, Sam? I know that members of the CPC Community Preservation are here that actually, I think, wanted to speak up, because I attended the meeting that they had just before our meeting started. You might at least give them an opportunity to weigh in.
Do we have someone from CPC who'd like to speak?
I know Patty Haney just spoke on that, and Ralph gave her the floor for the...
All right, well, I'll put a few words into that. In their discussions, there's certainly been a lot of ongoing concern about trying to get this part, this project restarted, and to take a look at what's possible, so...
You're talking, mean Spring Bars Road?
Spring Bars Road.
Specifically?
Specifically. I mean, there's the broader issues too, and that's also true of the Affordable Housing Group that meets, but I'll at least speak to that extent on behalf of them. And please, Virginia, if I'm overstating this, that commitment...
Virginia Carmichael, Vice Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. The Cape Cod Commission Report found that this project was feasible even with the challenges of the flood plain and no sewer at the time. So much has changed since that time, and so many positive things have happened. And also, the town has been, because of the housing study that Judy Barrett did, everyone's become more aware of the value of having workforce housing, young professional housing, and we've emphasized housing for seniors and people living alone in single apartments. But the need is for multifamily housing, for young professionals, young workforce people with, maybe married and with children. And that was what this, that's what the T-Ticket Association, after many, many meetings, got excited about on this property. And the Cape Cod Commission found that it was in fact feasible, that the price they estimated coming in as fell right in the middle of the feasibility range, despite the problems. The fact that it was in the FEMA, the new revised FEMA flood zone map was overcomable with fill and compensating drainage areas. So we would love to see something that would allow us to move forward. There's a lot of negative word on the street about this project, like, why would we want to build anything in the flood zone? Or why would we want to have a place where addicts can live? You know, you've heard it all. We would love to overcome that and create something that's very positive for the town of Falmouth. And any way we can see moving forward on that would just thrill us, because it's a beautiful piece of property. The T-Ticket Association has become so proprietary about it because of the Vernal Pool and the Cedar Swamp, and the fact that the conservation and recreation part of it is so beautifully designed. So we're just, we've got our fingers crossed that we can move forward. It's such a wonderful opportunity, and there's such a great need. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll, Sam, first, have that meeting with the planning board. All right, the next item is the special events. First, there's some recurring events. First is laughter yoga on Marina Park, Mondays starting today until August 31st. Next is the MBL Fourth of July Parade on Water Street and Woods Hole on the Fourth of July. Next is the Racoit Congregational Church Annual Summer Bazaar, Parsons Lane One Way Traffic on Friday, Saturday, Friday and Saturday, July 10th through the 11th. Then the 38th Annual Paul White Road Race, North Falmouth Library, Saturday, July 11th. Air Station Cape Cod Coast Guard Wet Drills Training on Bristol Beach.
I picked a hole down there.
Okay. The Main Street Mile on Sunday, September 13th in Main Street. The 38th Annual Cape Cod Marathon, Marathon Relay and Half Marathon, this is on Saturday and Sunday, and you want to hold this one? On August 24th and 25th. And the 52nd Annual Christmas Parade, Main Street on Sunday, December 6th. Motion to approve items 1, 2, 3, 4, 6, and 8.
So I'll move.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Okay, Mr. Patterson, Air Station Cape Cod Coast Guard Wet Drills Training Bristol Beach.
Yes, my question really was how it went last year, and then when they submitted the late application, and I think, from what I understand, it was, the participation was terrific among the Coast Guard community, and the families all enjoyed getting together and participating in this activity. But do we know from our beach superintendent whether there was any impact to the summer residents that are normally using the beach, you know, in the August timeframe?
My recollection is, the report is that it was a very positive event, and that did not create any issues with the beach.
In fact, after the event, the Coast Guard was here.
Right.
To tell us about it, and they received a lot of positive comments.
Just, the Coast Guard did come to the working group meeting last week to review their event. It is a very significant activity level on a public, on a beach in town, so I don't want to leave the impression that there's no impact. There's a lot of activity, the community is very positive about that. We've done some, made some changes this year to promote parking at the Gus Canty Center rather than using the public parking lot. We've asked them to make sure that they remain in the smaller lot on the left, on the eastern side of the beach, so that they maintain the other lot open for the community. So there were, there's a little bit in terms of parking last year, and we've made some changes to make sure that that's accommodated this year. And overall, the beach department was very happy to have them, and it's a nice community opportunity to observe the work of the Coast Guard.
I figure if you're going to land a helicopter, there's going to be an impact.
Right.
Thank you. I move approval then of the Air Station Cape Cod Coast Guard Wet Drills Training.
Okay, we have motion and second to approve, August 19th. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, the ayes have it. And the Cape Cod Marathon, Marathon Relay and the Half Marathon.
Is anyone here from that organization?
Hi.
Hi, my name's Matt Auger, I'm the race director for the Cape Cod.
Well, I have several questions for you. There was a, an organization that came from out of town and with many other people, and there was one of the best reports I think I have seen from any group that is using our town and makes it inconvenient for many people. And I just wonder if you have anything at all that you can do on the, other than the races are positive, but what you bring to the town? Because when I look at the map, you're covering quite an area, and you're handling a lot of people, and you're using two days. So I think in doing all that is very good, but I'd like to know what it brings to Falmouth. Do the people stay for two or three weeks? Are they using our restaurants? What, what do you know about that?
I can give you two very cogent points to that. One of the things we do is we partner with some of the hotels in town to list them on our website. We have to date, I think, 10 that take part of that, and we've been told by a lot of them that they stay open that extra time to accommodate for that, for that weekend. One of the reasons why we made the Half Marathon and Marathon a two-day event was because on a Saturday event, we had, excuse me, on a Sunday event, which is what the marathon was, previous to the Half Marathon, folks usually just came in either just the Saturday night or just the Sunday, ran and then left. When we added the Half Marathon, we got the, we did a couple of different things. Number one, we allowed people to do what's called the Chowder Challenge, where they can run the Half Marathon on Saturday, the Foam Marathon on Sunday. When that happens, when you take that challenge, you usually come in on Friday, get yourself situated, and then of course, run the two days. That was something else that happened. And then on Sunday, one of the interesting things that happened, has been happening is we offer a meal after the marathon. And just to put things in perspective for the marathon, we have around 1,000 people that compete in the marathon, and then another roughly 800 people that take part in the relay. That meal is at the Lawrence School. Free pasta, salad, chowder, refreshments, fruit. We've watched that number go down, down, down. In the meantime, we've watched the restaurants just up from the Village Green, the Quarter Deck, I know Aneho, informally, I've talked with Aneho and the Quarter Deck, I also know that Liam's and, there's one other one, have been packed that day, to the point that we're not sure what we're going to do exactly this year with regard to food. We have to do something for the runners, when they come into town and they compete in the marathon, they want something. We're hoping to move away from the Lawrence School and offer something smaller, because the growing trend in marathon running is to get a beer after the run. I'm not here to ask for liquor, I don't think you're ever going to, and I don't want that, but I think the towns and the, a lot of the restaurants in town. And through our committee, we've also discussed the possibility of maybe partnering with them. Some races do it where you can put on for the runners that are old enough, a coupon on their bib, and they could bring it in and redeem it for a beer in the restaurants. So we're trying to move with the trends and how it's going. I think the event does great for the town of Falmouth for the last weekend in October, I think arguably the most beautiful weekend in October. And our advertising is also going that way. One final thing that we've been doing that's been pretty exciting is we partnered up with the 50 Staters Club, so as I'm sure you'll know, there's a club for everything in this world. And these people are attempting to run one marathon in each of the states. And the significance of the Cape Cod Marathon is it's not the Boston Marathon. So if you want to come to Massachusetts and run a marathon, I think you have three choices. It's the Boston Marathon, something called the Lowell Marathon, it's called something else, it's run up in Lowell, and then the Cape Cod Marathon. The Cape Cod, the name, the Cape Cod Marathon, is just an automatic draw. Let's say we have been averaging maybe 10 to 20, we're probably closer to 50 of those folks coming in and running this marathon. So we're slowly but surely drawing in more people to stay overnight, to utilize the businesses in Falmouth, and that's something I hope we continue to grow.
Very good answer.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Move approval.
Motion and second to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, the ayes have it. Next, we have a new event, Beach Wedding Ceremony and Parking at Old Silver Beach on, for the Nortons, on Friday, August 12th. This is on the agenda, it says 2016, is that what it actually says on the application? I think I may have passed the application down to you guys already. Just want to check the date on that Norton.
It's August 5th, Friday, August the 5th.
What year?
2016, sorry.
August 12th?
That's important.
Or August 5th?
It's August 5th, 2016. I have a copy of it.
Is that, let's say, 8/12?
I don't know. It's Justine Norton, right?
Yeah.
Well, let's, here it is typed out, so, do we have an error maybe?
Well, I guess we should clarify what we're actually approving with the date, and we do have some time to do that.
Well, I think if it's on the application, it's probably the correct date.
For August 5th?
It's written in here as August 12th.
August 12th.
Yeah, so I think, oh, that's the working group record, though. I'm sorry, I'm reading, I don't remember where I have the original application. Do we know, Heather?
No.
Oh, here it is, my part, apology. It is, they have both August 5th and August 12th, I guess the second one is a rain date.
Yeah, so it would be August 5th.
August 5th is their first choice.
First choice.
2016.
2016, that's correct.
Comments, questions about the approval of the...
No questions.
Nope. Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll move approval for August 12th.
Second?
August 5th.
August 5th, sorry.
We have motion and a second to approve the wedding on, Old Silver Beach on August 5th, 2016. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, the ayes have it. Okay, moving on to business, to some interviews. First, we have for the Regulatory Board of Appointments, Reappointments, and for the Zoning Board of Appeals, and our first interview is Paul Murphy. Paul was just recently appointed and is now applying for a reappointment for a three-year term, turn 30th, 2018. Mr. Murphy here. Okay, well, we'll have to postpone.
Well, we did just interview him recently.
We did, right.
I mean, he, he applied, there was a vacancy very recently.
Well, we did just interview him recently.
We did, right.
I mean, he, he applied, there was a vacancy very recently, and he applied, and by the term was a very short period, which is why it ended now. So, but I guess there's still time before July 1st. When is our next meeting?
Not till July 13th.
Oh, it's not till July 13th?
I, I just want to ask, when we're reappointing, is it necessary for these individuals to come in and talk to us?
For regulatory boards, it has been our policy that we do interview someone who's being reappointed to a regulatory board.
I got you.
I thought at the time that we did that, and we all asked our questions of Mr. Murphy, and we said it was just going to go till the end of June.
Yeah, yeah.
And then it would come back up, and we would have our decision for him to continue. I, I think there was a discussion that he wouldn't be here again, because we went through the full process.
It wasn't very long ago that we interviewed.
No, it was, it's within a month.
I mean, I'd be very comfortable reappointing him at this point, without him here, because he indicated he wanted to be reappointed. He did, and...
I would be comfortable as well. I'm, the interview's fresh in my memory.
Then I'm going to move that we appoint Paul Murphy to the Zoning Board of Appeals for term ending 6/30/2018.
Second.
Motion, a second to appoint Paul Murphy, the Zoning Board of Appeals, June 30th, to term ending June 30th, 2018. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? The ayes have it. Okay, the next was to a, it's on the Board of Health, it was the next one I have right here.
Yeah.
And we did have requested to postpone that for, unfortunately for medical reasons with her husband, so she cannot be here tonight, but Diana Malloy.
Right.
And being a new applicant, I think we do want to hold the interview for that, correct?
Right, yes.
Okay.
I should request it, that we, that she come at their next meeting.
We did have a strong letter of support from the current chairman of the board.
Yes.
Next, the Board of Assessors has two vacancies, and we have two applicants. First is Timothy Skelly. Is Timothy Skelly here? If you'd please introduce yourself, give us a brief introduction as to why you'd like to be on the Board of Assessors.
Would you like to see a copy of my resume?
Well, we have.
Sure, that'd be great. Do you have a copy of that? We'll take a look at that.
I brought five of them.
Okay, thank you.
We do have your application, but your resume will be very helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
I am a resident of the town of Falmouth. I live in Valleymead, don't hold that against me. I live there with my wife and my two young children. I grew up in the town of Falmouth, have a great passion for the town, and I spent nearly fifteen years as a fixed income trader primarily in the municipal bond market. So I understand state and local governments, I understand their budgets. Currently, right now, I head up the Commercial Lines Division for People's United Insurance, which is a division of People's United Bank, and we underwrite commercial property and casualty for multiple cities in states and New England. So I understand the property and casualty side of municipalities. And I feel that I could be a, an asset to the board. As I said before, I have a great love for this town and would like to give back and clearly understand that with relation to property taxes and the budget of the town of Falmouth, it's a, it would be an important role, and I think I could help.
Questions for Mr. Skelly?
Just, is this your, your first application for a board in Falm?
Yes, it is. I am friends with Joan Devine, who currently sits on the board right now. She's a neighbor of mine in Valleymead and very close to her and her husband, and we do, we're business partners and good friends, and she convinced me that I would be an asset to the board, and here I am.
Great.
It's great, especially, you know, with children, and, you know, it's just great to get people to contribute their expertise, so I welcome your application.
Excellent, thank you.
We have to thank her for suggesting that you just do that.
It's always nice when friends bring other friends along too.
Right.
There you go.
Exactly.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Skelly?
Move approval.
A second.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We do have a second candidate also.
No, we have a motion and a second. Oh, we have a second candidate.
There are two vacancies.
Ask you reschedule.
There are two vacancies.
Right.
Right.
So we have a motion and a second to approve Timothy Skelly with a term ending June 30th, 2018?
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Congratulations.
Yes, thank you.
Check with the clerk, and he'll swear you in. Next item is for the Bike Ways Committee. We have one vacancy. This is an unexpired term ending June 30th, 2016. We have one applicant, Dr. Gross. Welcome back.
Thank you. I almost thought I had to order a pair of handcuffs.
Twice as good as Mr. Skelly.
I think I'll retain one so I can read along with you.
So you can just introduce yourselves and tell us why you'd like to be on the Bike Ways Committee.
My name is Ed Gross. As you can see, I'm a physician, but that plays a relatively small role in what, what you see in front of you. I've been involved in bicycling for transportation and recreation for, well, since I was seven. And that's a long time. More seriously, I, I joined in the effort to create a statewide organization to promote better bicycling laws back in the 1980s, when it was clear that the only organized bicycling activity around the Charles River Wheelman, of which I was a board member in Cambridge, was really devoted to recreation and didn't know how to go about getting better laws. So I helped create the Mass Bike, also known as the Massachusetts Bicycle Coalition. I was the founding president, and we went and got laws changed. In 1985, the state did its first comprehensive review of bicycle law, and the, the work they did serves still as, as the backbone of our biking laws in Massachusetts. Many other things have happened since then, and I served off and on on the Board of Mass Bike until 2009, simultaneously getting involved here when I moved here full-time in 2000. Got kind of immersed in the Bike Ways Committee. And as you can see, I am a, I call myself the emeritus chairman of the Bike Ways Committee. I was chairman for, through, through the opening of the northern extension of the Bike Way, put on a nice party, and if you came to, including Pat, who cut the ribbon so well. And now I come before you, having served my year of, of, what is it?
Exile.
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 I've been in the wilderness for a year, and I've come to ask you to put me back on the committee, so I can vote. Otherwise, it'll make little difference, because I've been helping out as much as I can.
Great. You have any questions for Dr. Gross?
No, but we've been anxiously awaiting for this year to be up, so he could come back.
Officially.
Well, I have to say, Scott Lindell has done the most extraordinary job. He's here in the, oh, he is here.
He is?
He's here in the audience. I, I have been just overwhelmed with that. Good a job. Thank you.
Very clever to go for an unexpired term, because that doesn't count in the three, three-year term. So after this one, you could add three more three-year terms before.
Oh, well, that's good. That'll keep me going. Well into my retirement, full retirement.
Move approval, second.
Motion, a second to approve Edward Gross to a term ending June 30th, 2016. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? The ayes have it. Next is the Council on Aging has one vacancy with a term ending June 30th, 2018. We have one applicant, Joseph Clancy. Mr. Clancy.
Good evening. I'm Joe Clancy. I reside on Currier Road. I've been our resident of Falmouth since 1976. I've had the pleasure recently of serving on the Senior Center Site Selection Committee. What really got my, my wheels turning was when I filled out the needs assessment the Council on Aging had set out. I was just overwhelmed with how comprehensive that document was, how it really got me thinking about not only my future, as I look forward to retiring, but, but, you know, what is going to go on with the Senior Center as a building, and all the programs that are available down there, none of which I had taken myself available to, because I'm still working. But I am actively looking forward to my retirement. I'm actively looking forward to enjoying a new building that is on our horizon. I've had a wonderful experience with the committee. I've enjoyed all of the meetings. I can tell you that I've made every meeting that has been scheduled, as well as the meeting a few weeks ago at the library, which was well-attended by a lot of townspeople. We have a terrific consultant, Joel, who did a fabulous job presenting everything. And everything about the Council on Aging is a very exciting time going forward in town of Falmouth. And I think that I could help as we go forward. I have the time available, being self-employed. The meetings are usually on Thursdays, I'm told, so I can make myself available and plan to attend every meeting that's scheduled.
Questions?
I would just comment that I'd love it when someone joins a committee, enjoys that work, and says, oh, we'll give you another committee to be a part of. So the more people can have of that.
That's right. Just as an observation, Mr. Clancy is a builder, and so in the process of building that Senior Center someday, we're going to get there, I think his expertise would be very valuable in terms of giving us an extra clerk of the works to kind of oversee what's going on.
I would welcome that. I do appraise a lot of commercial buildings. I'm in commercial buildings. I have a lot of experience with municipal buildings, appraise schools. So I've seen a lot of buildings over the course of my career. It's, I enjoy it, and I would welcome the chance again.
I think that's how we best know you, as an appraiser of some of the buildings here.
Yes.
Move approval.
We have motion, a second to approve Joe Clancy, Council on Aging, a term ending June 30th, 2018. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? The ayes have it. Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Joe.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Historic Districts Commission has three vacancies, two full-member terms until June 30th, 2017, and one alternate member term until June 30th, 2018. We have one applicant, Olive Anhavi.
And I'd like to be on the Historical Districts Commission, because I grew up in Southern California. And I love Falmouth. It's a very special place. I've lived here since July 5th, 1976, and I taught for thirty-seven years at Falmouth Academy. I serve presently on the Cultural Committee. And I just am eager to do what the committee works at, to help preserve the character of the town. I want us to look like 6A and Falmouth, not like Hyannis and some of the other places I won't mention. So I don't bring any particular expertise, but I've worked on lots of committees, and I'm a reasonably good writer, having taught English for more years than I'll mention. And I work well with people, I think, and I'm open to other people's ideas. So I would like to invest part of my retirement in working for the town.
Any questions from Sophie?
No, I just want to say that I, we're very happy that you have applied for this. And I, I knew that you were retiring, and I thought, well, I wonder if she will. So it's really nice that you did.
I do serve, oh, thank you, Mary Pat. I also serve on the Spritzel Board of the Woods Hole Library, of the editorial board of that. So it's nice to have a little time to invest in the town, having invested all those years in teenagers.
Ms. Moffin, you got a question?
I just wondered about your connection with the historical, is it commission?
Yes.
What, what is your, it's the people that are there?
No, I don't know anybody. I don't even know who's on the commission. I, I just, I just like the historical center of Falmouth, and I like the feeling of the town and Woods Hole. I've, my husband has worked in Woods Hole for years, and I've seen the people in Woods Hole try to keep the character of that part of the, you know, that village. And I think it's important for people to do the same for the village of, for this part of Falmouth, so.
Any questions, comments?
Move approval, second.
To which term? To the full or alternate term?
The full term.
To the full term, ending June 30th, 2017?
Yes.
Absolutely. All right, we have motion, a second, June 30th, 2017. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Congratulations. We'll keep you busy.
I'm taking Taiji for aging, so I shouldn't have a.
Thank you.
That's what I need to.
Next is the Upper Cape Regional Water Supply Cooperative. We have one vacancy, term ending June 30th, 2018. We have one applicant, Kerry Murphy.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Kerry Murphy from Wacoit, former member of this board, and the Mashpee member of the cooperative made mention that there was a vacancy, and I called Ray Jack and talked to him. And I do have some history with intermunicipal agreements and relationships, so I thought I'd throw my hat in the ring, and obviously my hat isn't the only hat in the ring. But I think it's important. I think if you open the Cape Cod Times this morning, they're setting up the same sort of thing. Bartholomew Yarmouth, you know, the Aquaphord knows no borders, doesn't respect the borders, and I think when they were surging the water, especially this weekend, and forth goes up, the pumps go to the top, and, you know, the ability, you know, it's almost a moral obligation to provide water to people. And I think that, you know, years ago, we predicted this is what could be a problem, and we set up a cooperative to deal with it. So I'd be very happy to serve on that.
Questions for historic?
I was very pleased to see your application, and I thought you had a little humor in it. I think there, I mean, as you were writing down the dates of the different things that you had done, I thought...
Well, it's a third of what I've done. I'm pleased to serve. It is a beautiful community, and I think water is, as evidenced by what's going on around the world in the nation, is incredibly important, and I think is important to Cape Cod for our growth and for our citizens and its protection.
Any questions?
No questions. Move approval.
Okay, motion is to approve the term ending June 30th, 2018. Motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for seeing you the other night at the Affordable Housing Dedication on St. Marks. It was a wonderful project, and it was nice to see the majority of you there. And I know you were all there in spirit, but it was very wonderful seeing you there. And going back to the Affordable Housing issues, private-public sector stuff is how it works. And I, I hope you focus on it, because it is a very, very, very important issue in this community moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kerry.
And our last list, on the list is the Waterways Committee. We have one term ending June 30th, 2018. Jay Michael Kinney.
I am Jay Michael Kinney, and I don't have a resume for you, but I did serve on this board for nine years. I was the chairman most of the time. During that nine years, I think I might have missed three meetings or less. I've been involved, I don't even want to say how many years on the water in this town, but over sixty. And I'm very familiar with the structures of the waterways that is available to us, and we've been trying to work as hard as we can, when I was on the committee, to try to expand the usage of the waterways and the structures that we have, and to maintain them. As you know, we, we do still have some problems. We have two or three bulkheads to replace. We have a West Falmouth issue that we have to deal with. We have two more bulkheads in Falmouth Harbor. We have a state ramp that was just built that needs to be repaired. So there's a lot of work to be done. I'm very familiar with the process, which is very important with this committee, because we're working with all kinds of agencies. And I'm just, you know, I was in exile for a year, but I went to meetings as much as I could, and I would like to continue. Any questions?
Well, I don't have a question. I just want to say that you have been a very effective and cooperative member of the Waterways Committee, as you say, for the last nine years. And having been on the board for a while, I'm very familiar with, with your work on the committee. So I would move that we appoint my Kinney.
Can you have one more question?
Is it too soon?
Too soon.
Oh, we have more questions?
No, no, I was just going to comment that it sounded like your to-do list as you went through each thing that the town needs to continue to do. And, and very few people can say that to us further in an interview.
Well, it all takes money, so that's what I was saying.
The only question I have is actually going to be embarrassing, and when asked the new liaison, when exactly does the Waterways Committee meet, so I can try to make it to the next meeting?
Wednesday evening, 7:00.
Every Wednesday evening at seven, at the?
Oh, not every. Once a month, first, first Wednesday of the month, although this, next month will be the second Wednesday.
Okay, great. Over at the harbor, Department of Commerce.
Now, I will, I will move to appoint my Kinney to the Waterways Committee.
Second.
Okay, until June 30th, 2018, we have motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Welcome back. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Well, we've moved on. We have a few items left. Are we okay to? Are we okay to continue, or does the board feel like a recess, or should we move on to the 151-288?
151.
There we go.
Yeah, we've got a lot of people here.
So, a few weeks ago, we divided to at least reconsider our position to the letter we had sent in November on the Route 151-288 intersection design. We'd had a report from the Mass DOT. We had a little more information from our town staff. Peter, do you have a presentation you'd like to give us?
Excuse me, just real quick, I'll.
I was just, I would thought this would be an enhancement for the discussion tonight, to have both options, to be able to show, so the, the members of the board, the audience and then folks at home can see. I do want to make, make a statement that the town of Falmouth, to this point, has had nothing to do with this design. This is a, a state design from Mass DOT and their design consultant, Tetratech, out of Framingham. They've had two pre-meetings, pre-25% meetings. It hasn't hit even the 25% preliminary plans. At the Herman Room in the library, they were well-attended last year. They had two options that they were looking at. One option was a traffic signalization, which is on the left side, and the other option was a roundabout, which is on the right side. I just, if you don't mind, I just wanted to go through the colors. I called the designer this past Friday. I knew this was coming up, and I asked him to send us over a plan. And today, I, I just put some colored lines on the plans to show where we were, the sections we were. The dark blue lines are the right-of-way lines. Those are the right-of-way lines for the, for the roadway. The darker brown, that's the, the buildings. And a lot of the buildings are labeled, the Beach House Restaurant, the Pizza Burger Drive-In across the way, Dean's Store on the third intersection. On the fourth intersection, it's, it's open right now, it's still wooded, and there's a brand-new dwelling behind that being built. And right across from the bike path terminus is the Bike Zone, is the Bike Zone Building. The red color is the limits of the project. That would be the limits of the project for the, for the intercept, for the intersection, and the limits of the project for the, for the roundabout. So, I just wanted to show people where they were facing north, south, east, west.
Can I just interrupt while you're on this point? Is there, do you know of any other buildings that are planned for that intersection in the near future?
On that, I am not positive, but I do believe that there's some discussion going on for this fourth intersection going on.
Another commercial building?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. But I think that would be more of a question for the planning board at this point, but I do believe that that's, there's some discussion on that.
Thank you.
So, what I would, would like to say before the discussion opens up is, I want to thank the board of selection for bringing this up. This is on the Transportation Improvement Program for the Vosso County for 2017 under the MassDOT program. Each month, I go to the meetings, I have an update on the projects. This is still pre-25%, so the state still has a ways to go to, to bring this to be put onto the 2017 schedule. But as of right now, it's on for, for 2017. And to make it easier, this is both side-by-side. This is individual, it's a little larger. That's the traffic signalized intersection. That's the roundabout intersection, and back to the end, so I can flip back and forth.
You did have a fairly good presentation about how the roundabout would look. The traffic signal section is, would also be a modification from what it is right now. Is that correct, or is that, is that adding islands in between?
Yes, that is correct. This is pre-25%, as I say. It, it could change, and most likely, it will change when they start looking deeper into it. But it's a brand-new signalized intersection. It'll be all new MassDots on all four corners. I do know Falmouth is moving towards, they like the black ornamental posts, the MassDots, and not the heavy-duty, you know, state highway MassDots. If you do look at both, at this point in time, if you do look at both options, the dark blue lines, it does not show the design going outside those lines, so it does not show any takings or any that the state would have to do, or the town would have to do for the, for the right-of-way. They do fall within the, the intersect, the intersection, the right-of-way lines. As you can see, this is the traffic signalized intersection, the limits, the roadway limits go further up each leg, down past the beach house and up this side. A good portion of it, if you look at, at the plans, it looks like there's some turning lanes and there's some right lanes, so that's why it goes a little bit further up. And as you can see on the, the roundabout intersection, the, the actual roundabout portion in here is going to be wider in the middle. It's going to be wider at the intersection, wider at the pizza drive-in, but it gets narrower as it goes up each one of the legs. So, it's a little, it's a little give or take on, on each one of the intersections designs.
Ms. Patterson?
So, Peter, in terms of the, a traffic signal intersection, what changes will they make to the actual intersection? Will they improve those corners in some way, square them off, or, or enlarge the intersection in any way?
No, what they're looking at right now, actually, is that's a very, as you can see by the, the right-of-way, there's a lot of room in that intersection. They'll basically utilize what's there right now. They might widen it a little bit. As far as the, there's a big island where the pizza replaces, they'll be going. Basically, the way it's shown right now with the state is it'll be following that around the edges of that. So, the intersection will somewhat remain the same. It'll get a little wider in front of the beach house for the turning lanes for each side, but the intersection will basically stay the same. In regards to the roundabout, that's where the, I mean, the roadway geometry will, will change with the roundabout intersection.
Ms. Patterson?
First of all, I want to make sure I thank Peter and Captain Reed and Captain, Chief Sullivan for coming and talking to me on this Friday morning to go over some of the details of these two designs and the trade-offs that were done by MassDOT and Tetratech in their recommendations, so that I would have a better understanding and understand where they were coming from. Peter, you had mentioned that currently, there's a Beaman Lane that comes out right into the intersection there?
Correct. It's, it's basically a fifth driveway. It's like a fifth leg to where the, at this time, right now, what happens is the, it's usually the Cisco trucks and the delivery trucks will come off the highway. They come up through the intersection, and they back, they back down the lane, because the lane basically stops at the private property. This used to be, the old county road used to come down through, would use to swing up, and it goes into, is it West, I think it's Westland or Summer Winds Estates.
Some of it.
And when they, this road actually went private, they blocked it off at the edge here, so the delivery trucks are for the beach house. They back in, and then they pull back out. So, that might, with each, with both designs, that might create a challenge, so.
Well, that's, and that was my question. They're going to have to accommodate those delivery trucks somehow or other, right? But that's the responsibility of the restaurant, to create a curb cut that actually works for their delivery trucks?
What it is, actually, right now, what the state showed on both designs, it looks basically the same on both designs, is right now, the roadway comes in, you can see the blue coming in through the, it comes in through the, the roadway, through the intersection right now. What they're looking at is the red, they want to square it up on this, on the intersection. They want to pull it before the traffic intersection, so the trucks come in and back down through.
Got you.
And also, pull it away from the roundabout on the, on the roundabout design.
Got you.
Got a question, Ms. Patterson?
Yeah, I think, I think it was Captain Reed brought up the fact that we don't have a large number of accidents in this intersection currently, right? At least, not in an ordinate number. But I, in reviewing the Tetratech-MassDOT presentation that they gave in March, excuse me, in, in May, they do indicate that the road safety audit has a higher accident rate than the typical intersections across Massachusetts. And I, so I think that's probably the reason it was triggered to be put on that list. I mean, can you address that at all?
Yes, yes. What happens is it hits the, the FHA has a list and criteria that they have to, federal highways administration has a list that they have to meet for the high crash rates, and they have to look at these intersections, and, and this popped up on their list in Falmouth. Because when this actually first came up, I think the public officials and myself and others were saying, "Why is this intersection? There's, there's more intersections in town, or more intersections that appear to be more, more dangerous than, than this one." I know a couple off the top of my head, so.
Right.
So, when this came up, we were kind of scratching our heads, saying, "Why?" But the state, that's what the state explained, is that it hit their high collision rates in 2009 to 2012.
Want me to continue? You know, I participated in the discussion, and I was given a fair amount of information to digest over the weekend, and I did do that seriously. And I'm still convinced that the state is making a pretty good case for the roundabout approach. And if you look at the data taken across the country, it's showing that roundabouts are safer than the signalized intersections, because they eliminate the left-turn conflicts that occur between vehicles. The three studies I reviewed actually looked at bicycle safety, because if I look at the actual statistics for, for reduction in crashes by the national statistics from the, let's see, National Cooperative Highway Research Program, which is part of the programs of the U.S. Department of Transportation, they indicate that there's a 90% reduction in fatal crashes of automobiles. There's a 75% reduction in injury crashes in general. There is a reduction of 30 to 40% of accidents with pedestrians, and a reduction of only 10% for bicycles. So, the bicycles don't get as much of a benefit, but do benefit from roundabout intersections. That's pretty convincing data. And I think the other thing, in looking at various pictures of roundabouts, they, they're actually pretty attractive, and they look far more village-like than they do urban-like. And to me, that kind of fits in with what we want Falmouth to be, you know, our preservation of historical look, and more of a village environment, rather than something that looks more urban. So, we've got safety issues from outsiders who have been doing broad surveys versus, I guess, the resistance to, you know, changing what has been working, at least at some level. So, that's, that's the issue that I have. If I look at this, the safety wins out. Beyond that, I've talked to a lot of people, including bicycles, and then Scotland Bill is here, and I spoke to him on the phone, heard testimony from other bicyclists who seemed to favor the roundabout approach. So, I'm, that's, that's kind of where I still am, you know, and I really appreciate the dialogue that we've had. But I do want us to be smart about this, and not just simply, you know, say, "Gee, it's, what's the context?" Well, the context to me is more positive in looking at a roundabout approach than it is in a signalized. And that's not where I was in November. I've made a big turnaround, and it's because of the survey information that's been made available to me, and the actual analysis that was done to show how you would eliminate collision conflicts by going to the roundabout versus that of a signalized intersection. And so, that technical analysis was pretty convincing to me. So, but, you know, I know I'm not, I haven't convinced many of the town employees, and, but I do respect the time that they put into it, and I respect their position. It's just, it's a tough one.
I would just like an opportunity to, for the folks who've studied this, and the professionals in the room, to just give their view as to whether it's changed since we initially reviewed this. The chief, if you would speak to a moment, and I think Mark, I guess, the fire department chief is, is also back there, and Peter as well. Could you please, in any order, just give about five minutes of your view of the, the difference between the roundabout proposal and the, and the signal intersection improvements?
Carrie?
Thank you.
I'll round my notes. I did have a, I did rethink this, but I rethought it to the point where I wanted to come to the meeting tonight thinking that I wanted to be a little more open to the intersection process. I think by the, the emails that I've sent over the last several months, I think most of the board and folks that I've talked to know, and I'll go through it, but know the stance that I've been through. I do appreciate MassDOT's work that they do. I mean, they're in a position right now where they have more vehicles on the road and complete streets, where they have to take care of vehicles, they have to take care of cars, they have to take care of pedestrians, they have the bike paths showing up. So, they have a, a very difficult job to do, and, and I do understand that. But personally, for me, once again, I'm going to say the word, in, in the context for, for where the area is, to me, this is a, a commercialized, basically a commercial intersection. I know we try to make it a village-type-like, but it's, it's more of a commercial intersection. And in the near future, if that fourth corner does get developed on this side, that's going to be a, it's going to be a busy intersection. You're going to have a lot of driveways that, vehicles are going to be pulling in and pulling out of the pizza, the burger drive-in. I know that that does a lot of vehicles pulling in and pulling out. The Dean's Store is going to have a lot of vehicles pulling in and pulling out. The Beach House Restaurant, the, that turning movement for the, for the trucks and for the deliveries is going to be a little difficult. If you don't mind, I'm just going to, I had, I know the board had sent the letter back in, in November. I'm just going to read the two comments that I had sent.
That's what I was looking for. Thank you.
So, the, the comments that I wore were items four, five, and six on that letter that was sent to the MassDOT. And the number, the number one was, the item four, was "The Shining Sea Bike Way is a major resident tourist attraction with highly hourly pedestrian bicycle volumes every day throughout the spring, summer, fall seasons. In my opinion, the proposed roundabout splitter islands that will be used as a protected zone for pedestrians and bicycles." And what, and what they mean by the splitter, splitter islands are these green islands right here. Basically, the pedestrians and the bikes will come along, they'll cross into that splitter island, and they'll, that's basically, it's considered a safe zone for the, for the pedestrians, for the bicyclists, until it's safe to cross, and then they'll cross further, go over to the other side. And if they were going over to Dean's Pizza, they'd do the, the same, come over and come over to the other side. I do believe the bikeways, there are folks from the bikeways committee here tonight, they have done hourly volumes on the, on the bike path, and I know they're, they're high hourly volumes for, for that area. And any of the traffic that might be going down to that area, to that intersection, I think, I wouldn't want to be stuck in the middle of the splitter island in the middle of the, in the summer. So, my, my, my recommendation on my thought on that is, "The islands that used to, as the protectors, as the protective zone for pedestrians and bicycle crossing, the intersection are not adequate for the proposed seasonal volume. Many bike path users, including families with young children, will be trying to navigate through the roundabout to reach their destination." The second comment I had is, during the presentation of the last, the last presentation that the state made, the design group mentioned that if a traffic signalized intersection was built, vehicles traveling eastbound on County Road towards the intersection will speed up over the crest of the railroad tracks and the bike path while trying to make it through the intersection green light phase, and that vehicles would not be able to do that with a roundabout because of the slow traffic in front of them. The distance, and my comment is, "The distance between the bike path and Route 28A is about three, is approximately 370 feet. Vehicles are traveling fast through this area because of the lack of traffic common devices, i.e. advanced traffic signs, pavement markings, et cetera. Backed-up traffic with both design intersection, intersection designs will basically be limited to the AM and PM rush hours." So, those were still basically my, my, my largest comments. This has a, a large fluctuation in the summertime months. A lot of tourists go down through there, a lot of boats go down to the McGannset, try to, to launch at the McGannset Harbor there, on the McGannset Boat Ground, get the Wild Harbor area. But what I did, my last comment on this, or my last sentence on this, would be, my recommendation would be that the selectmen cautiously review the information presented from MassDOT and decide in the design that is best, in, in the best interest of pedestrians, bicycles, vehicles, and tourists. bicycles, vehicles, and tourists alike. And I think that's what we're doing here tonight, so I do really appreciate this being on the item tonight. And I think what I'd like to, as being a public official, a part of the safety, along with the fire chief and the police chief, I'd like to also hear from the residents of the town of Falmouth. It's their town, it's their residence, it's their area, what they'd like to see up there. But that was just my comments towards this area. A lot of discussion is put on for roundabouts across the gate, 149 next to the highway and the other one at the intersection next to the airport. To me, those roundabouts are in totally different contexts. Basically, it's, they're undeveloped areas. There's no buildings on each of the corners, there's not a lot of pedestrians, not a lot of bicycles. So to me, in those areas, does it, yeah, they are roundabouts and they do work very well, but they don't really have, I don't think they fit a lot...
You can't compare them with what we have.
To this design.
That's right.
And the information that was brought by the state, all that information with the design and the traffic counties and the collisions and the A Ms and the P Ms and the hourly volumes and the level of service, that all can be manipulated to whatever, to each design that they use. It could be, you know, it could be for an intersection or it can be for the roundabout. And it's just the way that they take that information and bundle it all and put it together.
Do you see the roundabout working anyplace in Falmouth? For instance, Sandwich Road, 151, would that be a...
Actually, I do. I know we're working with a transportation consultant working on the Main Street study. And I would actually like to see an option put in there for maybe a roundabout type of design at two places. One right at the Friendly's intersection, Gus Canty, maybe something in that area. It's a heavily congested area. And another one right at the end of Dillingham Ave where Citizens Bank is on the one corner. That's...
The problem is, those are both, I mean, yes, the argument against doing it here is because how commercial they are. You've just named two places that are about as commercial as you can get, so I want to make sure I understand what the difference between those places and this would be.
Yeah, basically in North Falmouth, the speed limit's about 45 miles an hour through that area, and people do fly through there because of the lack of, there's a lot of woods. I was actually, the fantastic thing about computers today is you can go out to the site without even leaving your office. You get onto Google Earth and you can actually travel up all four legs of the roadway to see all the, and actually, that's where I got a lot of the information for the names of the stores. But I think a big part of it is the speed up in that area, whereas the speed down by Friendly's or the speed over by Dillingham Ave is more congested because of all the driveways and all the curb cut openings.
And just to kind of wrap it up here, can you just summarize, hit by or six points about the, if we just picked the signalized intersection, all the improvements that we'd be getting? For example, that hill, I know they've got to put an extra signal so that people don't fly through the intersection, they'd have some kind of warning, those kinds of things.
Well, I'd like to talk on both intersections. What really concerns me also, not just on the intersection and roundabout, but as at the end limits, when it's crossing over the bike path, in 2009, the state came in and they said, "Here's your bike path, we're leaving. We've got to do our punch list because everything, it's a numbers game, the money runs out and they've got to move on to the next project." And basically, what happened is they came to us and said, "We're moving on to the next project." And I was working with the fire chief and police chief and were kind of struggling to see what we could do at the terminus up there with the funds that we had left over to make that area more safe. So something like maybe a coordinated effort, signalize a pedestrian crossing, the rapid flashing beacons, that's coordinated either with the intersection or coordinated with the roundabout, that's pulled into the design, I would like to see that. On the opposite side, where the beach house is, something pulled into that crosswalk, those vehicles come off that highway, there's a 35 mile an hour speed limit sign, but they're not doing 35, they're doing 45, 50. And then when they jack on the brakes, about 30 or 40 feet away from the set of lights. To me, with an intersection, you're going to see those lights when you're coming up onto it. You're going to see the green light, the yellow light, the red light. Coming up onto a roundabout, they're going to have to put in traffic lighting, street lighting to put in that area. And they're going to have to put a lot of high visibility signage in that area to, you know, to alert the vehicles. Those are the types of things that I'd be looking at also, is the outskirts, what's going on at the ends, to see if we can fix what's going on in the other corners. I think the fire chief and the police chief could probably talk plenty about the accidents and being first responders up in that area, so...
Thank you.
With me, not only with the intersections itself, whatever design is chosen, I would really like to work close with Mast D O T and their designer. This is not one of those areas where Mast D O T can just open up the book to the, and just pop out a roundabout and plop it in place, or an intersection and plop it in place. It's going to take some, I think some of it's going to take some creative design on the outskirts of it.
And you're right, with the roundabout, plus especially coming down that hill off the highway, it's basically a brick wall compared to a signaled intersection unless they've got to really tremendously like that.
People say that they hit, they see a yellow light, they hit a yellow light and they speed up. And it's true, people do, but, you know, so there's pros and cons for each of the designs. Preferably, mine is for the intersection, but I'd like to hear from others.
For the chiefs?
Chief Dunn or Captain Reed, do you want to?
Before, can I just make a comment? One of the things that really impressed me with Peter's analysis is the need to address the bike path crossing there and the passenger crossing there at the beach house restaurant. You know, either intersection that we, type of intersection we go with, I think he's right. We really have to focus to make sure that the changes are made there for pedestrian and bicycle safety. I think that is absolutely critical in either design.
Correct, correct. And one other comment that I brought up is where the Summer Winds subdivision comes out to the side, both intersections, the limit of work stops approximately 300 feet up from the roadway. I'd like to continue that sidewalk right up to Summer Winds. So you could have, you have a parking lot on this side for people crossing, the people park there, but people that come up for burgers and driving will be able to walk down to go into, because that's just where 151 starts and those cars start and they come up. So at least it'll give pedestrians, bicyclists a safe area from the roadway.
Will the road in any way infringe upon the parking lot that's there now?
The way it's shown right now, the traffic intersection does not look, does not look like it does, it, on the traffic intersection, on the opposite side towards the beach house, they have a turning lane come up there, a Q lane. On this side right now, no, they don't look like they, this is a less impacted, you can see the sides of the road, it's less impact to the edges of the road and to the buildings. This is more, seems to be more in-depth, it widens out, seems to be taken more into consideration. Some of it's from the Q lanes, but it seems to be...
That parking lot is up by the town, I believe, isn't it? Part of it, maybe?
I would have to take a look at that, how that works. I know that it's used that way, but legally, how the property goes, I would have to take a look at that to see.
Chief Dunn?
No, I don't think so. No, they're all kind of, sorry.
Thank you. And just real quick to start off, I will echo what Peter said and what Sam said. No matter which design is out there, those crosswalks need to be addressed drastically. Because, I mean, we've all come along, especially, you know, the beach house there, when they were in operation, people coming and going at night, even in the daytime, as well as the bike though. Those should be addressed. As far as the traffic flow is concerned, as far as, you know, the police department is concerned, is first and foremost is safety. Either design, I'm not going to pick either one of them. I mean, I think they both have pros and cons. You have to decide. But just let me give you some stats. I know the state did their stats. And our stats, for accidents at the Route 151, 28A, at or near the intersection, I can't tell you exactly without having to go on the reports, but at or near, 2010, we had six, 2011, we had seven, 2012, we had two, 2013, we had three, 2014, we had three, so far in 2015, we've had three, for a total of 24. That's at or near the intersection. The state gets their data from accident reports. So you may have had a fender bender and reported it to your insurance company, you may not report it to the police department. So some of their stats could be a little bit higher. I also checked our stats for the current rotary that's on 28A. Zero for all those years. So, does it work? I don't know.
No commercial development in that, right?
Correct.
Zero.
Zero. So, and again, I'm not opposed to the rotary or the signalized. But it's important to realize that the stats the state is using are different than probably what I have because other people would report to their insurance companies. But first and foremost is going to be the safety. I'm concerned about pedestrian crossing because of the, you know, the businesses that are in there, the bicycles, same thing. I know Captain Reed shared with you at the Mastery Rotary, he had witnessed a bicycle and thought it was quite dangerous for him, but I haven't had that opportunity. Bottom line is public safety, and whatever the town decides, we'll try to enforce it.
Thank you.
Captain Reed, did you want to add anything, or Chief Sullivan?
Good evening. I just think that the traffic light is a system that works, and I think it's safer just common sense-wise, I'm not sure that it is. I know we have the stats from the state, but I would question those statistics because I can think of a lot more intersections in town that need some attention up in that one, on state roads, Route 151, Boxby Hill Road, Curry Road. We have accidents out there. I don't have the statistics, but I can tell you just from personal experience that there's a lot more dangerous intersections than we. If a rotary is safer, I don't know that it is. Plus for us, as you know, the North Falmouth Fire Station is around there, and if it's a traffic light system, we have preemptive, the optocoms would control the traffic lights when emergency vehicles go through, and we wouldn't have that luxury with a rotary. We don't have that up there now because that system is so old when we were doing the optocoms in town that they couldn't do that intersection. And as far as the safety of the pedestrians and traffic, I know we just had that meeting the other day, and I don't know how much pedestrian traffic we do have up there, but I personally would rather cross at a red light where you press the button or it stops than taking a chance and trying to cross at a rotary, I guess, common sense-wise. It's safer for the public. So that's all I have, unless you have any...
My question is for the chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there someone, anyone who in the public would like to speak? Mr. McDonald?
Chairman? I've got notes tonight. I'm not going to, Jamie McDonald from North Falmouth. Pedestrian safety, this is from the source of Federal Highway Administration, I was getting a little, I was getting, I wanted to come up with some facts. Pedestrian safety, "Due to the reduction of vehicle speeds in and around the intersection, roundabouts can improve pedestrian crossing opportunities. You would consider one direction of conflicting traffic at a time. Low vehicular speeds allow more time to react." Traffic calming. Roundabouts have traffic calming effects on local streets by reducing vehicle speeds. The chief talked about speeds, Peter talked about speeds. What a roundabout will do was it'll slow people down, not only in that specific area, but also in the surrounding area. As the chief knows, the police, that there's some real speed issues in North Falmouth. Environmental factors. By reducing vehicle delay, no stop and start, it improves air noise quality, fuel consumption. Aesthetics. The opportunity to provide attractive entries. Welcome to North Falmouth. Motorist considerations. Roundabouts can enhance the safety of drivers, including older drivers, by allowing more time to make decisions, act, and react. Reduce the number of directions of conflicting traffic. Reduce the need to judge gaps in fast traffic. Here's the big one. Emergency vehicles. Roundabouts provide emergency vehicles the benefit of a lower vehicular speeds, which make roundabouts safer for them to negotiate than signalize crossings. Unlike signalized intersections, emergency vehicles will not encounter through vehicles. In other words, somebody running through the light to hit the truck unexpectedly running the intersection at high speed. In your packet, I handed something, I hope you got the information that I handed out. In your packet, to your point about commercial, there is a rotary in Etucket that is surrounded by commercial property. And it's also a stone's throw from the main fire station in Etucket. It's been there for years. It has solved the problems of that intersection by 200%. Can the roundabout intersection from the state be improved? I think so. But I think you have to look at this, again, as I said before, in a whole context of planning. Yes, our town planner looked at it, but not, he looked at it by itself, this is a quick conversation I had with him. He didn't look at it, Peter identified the businesses in the area. But you've got to look at it down the road. You know, when we built the new Stop &amp; Shop here, it was new at one point. There was an intersection that was built specifically for that and what's happened to that intersection. We've got bigger lights, more lanes, higher speeds, and more traffic. It's like water reaching its own level. If you keep building roads to accommodate traffic, you're going to get more traffic. So I hope you support the roundabout. It can be tweaked, there's no doubt about it. Thank you.
Anybody else?
My name is Robert Fitzpatrick. I'm on the bikeway committee, but I'm not speaking for the bikeway committee. We haven't been asked to address any issues here. However, I have gone to the meetings. And I think it's interesting because your last speaker was, you know, very informative and he wanted facts, and he gave them. But he gave them from the automobile point of view. He doesn't consider the biker's point of view. So that's kind of where I'm coming from. I started riding a bike in the 40s. Started riding, driving cars in the 50s. So I've had a little experience in both sides. And when I went to the meeting and I looked at the various things, I was very much in favor of the roundabout because it's, I was thinking, when I drive my big van, I can go through an intersection at a very low speed, but I can get through faster than waiting for a red light. And when you talk about low speed for a car, it's 24, 25 miles an hour. That's very fast for a biker. So I looked at what happens to bikers when they get into roundabouts? They're under tremendous stress, and why are they under stress? You're moving at a speed that's not as fast as the cars, but it's with the cars. The cars are coming in from the right, they're tending to push you to the left, or they're pushing you from behind because they don't like to go 10 miles an hour, they want to do 20, 25. So I looked at this particular design, and whoever did it, in the state, they put in bike lanes, they put in arrows, they put in a number of things. And when I'm sitting there next to a car that's idling and I see an arrow going, I know what that guy's going to do. But when I'm in a situation, I ride maybe 100 miles a week, not in the winter, but during the season. And I asked the fellow from the state D O T, I said, you know, I said, "Falmouth's not the same as other towns. We don't just have two towns that we have, we have eight towns. We have six on the island. We have an island that increases its population by 100,000 people in the summer. Falmouth increases by 70,000 people in the summer. And what are you going to do in the winter when the plows come through and they plow the snow and you've got these crosswalks? Who's going to shovel them?" They didn't have an answer for that. So from a biker's point of, from my point of view as a biker, I like to know what the other guy's going to do before he does it, instead of getting into a traffic circle and have to figure it out. In this instance, you've got to go by, if I were going to go up to the bike path coming from this direction, I would have to go by one street, well, probably not too crowded. I've got to be careful because it may have a car coming out or a truck backing up. Then I have to have people coming in from the right here to the right here, and then I've got to figure out how to get across people up here. When I looked at the design that they had here, they had put sidewalks up, they had taken into account that above 370 feet or so is the bike path. I don't know if you know this, but generally, on a typical weekend... I don't know if you know this, but generally on a typical weekend in Falmouth in the summer, there's about 100 people an hour using our bikeway. And if you look at the accidents in this town, you'll find that the state highway doesn't have a really good record. They don't design their, like, they don't design their roads for a lot of folks, they do it for automobiles, or they have at least for the last 50 or 60 years. So if you were going to ask an old man who rides bikes, I'd say, go with the lights, it's much safer, much safer. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Anybody else? Mr. McDonald?
He's my boss.
I am the chair of the bikeways committee, I'm Scott Lindell. And I don't speak for the committee because this issue hasn't come before our committee, we haven't been charged by the planning board or the board of selection to discuss this and perhaps we shouldn't. I think we're still in the early phase, only 25 percent design phase, et cetera. And the devil will be in the details of how are these intersections accommodate pedestrian and bicycle traffic as we've already alluded to. So I speak really as an experienced driver and bicyclist. I'm not trying to say I have any special traffic engineering experience, but I like the simplicity and especially the traffic calming capacity of the roundabout. And when we consider that we want to, you know, we want to reduce the speeds as they go past the beach house or come out of this intersection and go past the intersection with the bikeway, I think the roundabout is effective in doing that or will be more effective than the traffic signal intersection where people can blast through there and before they know it, they're upon the bike path. So I think, I'm really thinking of this in perspective of how are the majority of transit people in all transportation going to be best accommodated? And I think that's what the roundabout does best, both for safety and for its aesthetics and principally for safety. So as I say, the devil's in the details about how pedestrians and cyclists are accommodated in the roundabout. And one thing that studies have shown, and I think the planning department circulated some papers about roundabouts and bicycle safety in particular, and Sam shared those with me. And I studied them this afternoon and I think what I concluded was that appropriate signage to direct cyclists safely through a roundabout is critical. And what happens too often with inexperienced bicyclists with no signage and no experience is that they will, they will try to make a bike lane where there isn't a bike lane through a roundabout. So the signage that's appropriate is bicyclists must use full lane or the sidewalk. Now frankly, first time that somebody's going to come upon this as a cyclist, if they're smart, they're going to bail and go through the sidewalk. But as they gain more experience with that roundabout, as they see, assess the traffic situation, it's really busy, I would bail and take the sidewalk and the protected island crossing there. If the traffic isn't busy and I'm feeling well visible and confident, I'd take the full lane, just as I do now in intersections in downtown here. So I think with appropriate accommodations of sidewalks that are suitable for bicyclists and pedestrians around this roundabout, I would much favor the roundabout. I think that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Yep.
My name is Barbara Martineau and I live on Fernwood Road, which is in the Somerset Hills development. I've lived up there for 33 years, which is off of the North Falmouth Rotary. You can call it a roundabout, it's too big for a roundabout. We like living off of the rotary because it allows us to get into traffic smoothly, particularly at 3:30 on Friday afternoon after the school lets out and the contractors are going home. However, I'm going to ask you to vote for the traffic signal intersection because all Chief Dunn says there's been no accidents at the North Falmouth Rotary, I can give you anecdotal stories about all the close calls we've had up there because people do not know how to handle a rotary. The signage is gone from the rotary, the yield signs have disappeared, some of them, the no left turn signs have disappeared. People come out of the Seacrest and they, out of Curly Boulevard and they go left and beat the traffic coming southbound. People going southbound don't realize that there's a rotary. And if you stop to see around the giant snowbank that was there this winter, because you have to stop in order to see if there's anybody coming around the rotary, because after all, you're supposed to have the yield sign, the guy behind you will hit his horn because he doesn't understand that this is a rotary or that you're not supposed to stop because you can't see. People going southbound will take a left and go around the rotary the other way. Everybody up there, the stories are legion. I think a traffic signal intersection has a lot of advantages, as Mr. Fitzpatrick said, because a red light means you stop, a green light means you go forward with caution. If you have turn signals, you can turn. If you have a right on red, hopefully you stop before you turn right. But there's a very definite thing that strangers should know what to do with traffic signals. They don't know how to handle the rotary. As far as hitting a brick wall, that rotary on 149, you can come up the frontage road along the highway and it's upon you really fast. And if you don't know what's there, you can do what they used to do with the North Falmouth Rotary and drive right through it, right over the grass. They don't do that now because of the zero escaping that was put on it. So please, vote for the traffic signal intersection. Pedestrians can be solved by putting in some sidewalks, putting in some turn signals, maybe making double lanes so there's a turn signal lane and other things. The state has a bad reputation in my mind, they never solve the problem at the hospital lights, there's no left turn signal there when you're coming out of the hospital at 3:30. Hopefully they'll do a better job here and hopefully everybody will keep an eye on it. Thank you very much.
Anthony Petrucci, North Falmouth, Le Main Road. Been driving along there for at least 43 years now. I, every piece of information, research I put my hands on from federal DOT and state DOT says the rotary is the safest route and far safer than a signalized intersection. Now, I agree that there have to be some tweaks to the design for the rotary, but everything, all research, not anecdotal comments, but all research indicates from state DOT and federal DOT that rotary is the safest. So I would like to see you vote for the rotary. Thank you.
I think I had a lot to say as I have worked on this for a while. And I think I've heard most of it from different people. So it would be rather redundant for me to say, but it's, I have said several times that I drive a lot and I'm in a lot of different places. And I would like to just go through a few roundabouts or rotaries and think about the size. I don't know that our rotary is going to have the same size as the one over by the Hyannis Airport or the one at the Mashpee Commons. Those allow for a lot of cars to move. When I went over to, and I've talked about it several times, the one that the state keeps talking about in Norfolk off of Route 115, it is a brick pavement and it's different types of brick and it is not smooth. And the only thing that is there is up on a hill, there's a Walgreens. And then way beyond, there's a Dunkin' Donuts. And otherwise, there is nothing else there, so it doesn't compare. And then when I look through the different photos they've given us, they take us to Worcester. And I don't know that a rotary or roundabout in Worcester with as much commercial is going to be the same as what we have here. I understand the whole business about a roundabout moving traffic. Well, if you have one that is 100 feet long, 100 yards, excuse me, you can get four cars in there. So wherever you're coming from, 100 yards will allow you four cars as they're coming and they don't talk about that. So if you're coming any of these roads and you're in a line of eight or 10, you will only be able to go into that rotary as one of those four cars goes off somewhere. That's going to back up because the traffic that eventually gets down to the beach is going to be at that corner. And when you're driving and you're backed up, it's because inside doesn't move because it's not big enough. It has to be a good sized rotary to keep the amount of traffic that we anticipate to be at that corner. What really bothered me as I looked at all these pictures that the state gave to us is it has nothing to do with Falmouth. It's not a, it's not Falmouth. I mean, they're somewhere in California, they've been in Pennsylvania, but it's not Falmouth. And we know how that intersection works and for most people that come to visit us and a lot do, they know a signal light and they know how to handle that. So in my part of Falmouth, I deal at this time right now with people walking dogs, well, I don't know whether they're going to walk the dogs along that part or not. I have mothers with carriages, I have runners, a lot of runners, and then I have bikes. And I try to give allegiance to each one of them. I try to keep my car at a point that everyone that needs a part of where I'm driving, I want to give allegiance to that and let them go on. And I stop, but that's over off Monot Road. I mean, that's a whole different view than it is right here. So I really wanted to like the roundabout. I wanted to do that and I kept going different places to see if I liked this one. Yeah, I like that one, but it has nothing to do with what we're talking about. So I'm definitely with having the traffic light because it accommodates all the different varieties and it's, Falmouth has its own unique moving of traffic and the traffic light would be my choice and the roundabout loss.
Ms. Martin?
Sure. The, what this says to me in terms of the future, it's going to have a huge, huge impact on a lot of people and all the folks visiting. And the choices to me seem to be, you know, it's what they say about physicians, first do no harm. I mean, you have a, in the traffic signal intersection choice, it's clear improvement, it's a definite win. Then I, you know, I look at the experts in the room, the people that have, you know, been in Falmouth for a long time as professionals, the recommendation has been from the beginning, traffic signal intersection, they've even, you know, with an open mind, taken another look at it. You know, I give the fire chief a lot of credence in terms of, you know, the actual accidents and of course, the chief of police with respect to the actual statistics, which always bothered me about the state plan. And I know that, you know, that the state's trying to put these roundabouts in many places, they're cheaper to run. And then the last thing is I saw, I'm freezing, that's why I'm talking with my teeth chattering here, but the, I went into Jill Bishop at the senior center presentation, you know, and I've been talking to a lot of people, you know, and I've said, you know, our population of course is, you know, it's a high percentage of older folks. What's your feeling on the roundabout versus just the improved intersection? And she, and I told her I was going to quote her, she said, I don't think a lot of people are going to know what to do on the roundabout. And that's really, that's a problem because it creates, you know, there's a bit of a panic when you have people behind you beeping, there could be a sort of a whiplash situation for people. I just really think that, you know, I really am thinking about going for the sure thing in terms of the improved intersection where we can address a lot of our safety concerns. The roundabout, it's really a black hole and there are a lot of, you know, there are a lot of problems that have risen with that.
Interesting thing about the senior citizens, those are the same people who at the senior site feasibility were very upset about ever having to take a left-hand turn.
Mm-hmm.
And that's what a roundabout does get you rid of, that you don't have that left-hand turn. I'm, you know, emotionally more inclined to head to the roundabout, but the professionals are, you know, are the people we've hired and appointed to make our recommendations, so.
Mr. Chairman, could I make one other comment?
Sure.
Just a piece of information for the board that goes back several months. One of the meetings that, one of the multiple meetings that have been held on this, I and several of my professional colleagues had raised a question that has never been answered, but I believe the lack of an answer has made a strong statement. As we know, 151 and 28A is a long time commercialized intersection. It's also been a signalized intersection for decades, decade after decade. As Fire Chief noted, these signals are so old that they're not able to use opticon on them. They've been around a long time, people are used to this being a signalized intersection. The question that we posed to Tetra Tech and Mast Dot was how many other intersections in the Commonwealth have previously been longtime signalized intersections in a commercial area or even not in a commercial area, longtime signalized? Normally, signals are generated by commercial activity. And they said they thought there were others and they would get back to us. They've given us no examples, none. And my conclusion is that this would be a beta site. This would be, in all likelihood, the first occasion, and I draw that conclusion because they provided not a single piece of information for us of an intersection that I believe is like this one, that has been decades long, signalized. They've given us plenty of examples where there are intersections that had been stop signs that are now roundabouts or that were designed from the get-go as roundabouts, but not longtime signalized intersections that were converted to roundabouts. And I was prepared to have one or more examples that were never forthcoming. And so I passed it along as drawing my own conclusion that, again, this would be a beta site.
You mean test site when you say beta site, right?
Correct. It'd be a test site for this concept based upon their not having provided any information on that, although it was represented that they would be doing so.
I guess I'm going next. I kept a very open mind through this. I missed the first meeting, obviously, with the state, but as one who drives a great deal, and I drive through roundabouts at least three days a week, but they're not like this is planning to be. The one's over on Race Lane that cut through 149, I forget, Fatuert Road maybe is the other one. What I notice is, and what I like about them, is that you slow down when you know you're coming to the roundabout. Everybody slows down. You never, I've never seen in the, what, three years maybe that those roundabouts have been there. I've never seen anybody really speed up to a roundabout. I also grew up in Washington DC where we had a lot of circles and circles are not roundabouts, I realize that. But at the same time, you always had to slow down when you got to a circle because you never knew who was, you know, maybe going too fast coming the other way and there were various entry sites to the circles. I think they do improve intersections based on the facts that we've had and the discussions we had with the state. I just think it's an opportunity to actually see how well a roundabout will work. So I'm very much in favor of the roundabout. I think it has a lot of, a lot of possibilities for safety, whether it's bicycles, whether it's pedestrians or cars. As I said, I like the idea that you have to slow down when you come to it and you have to, when you get there, you have to figure out when is your turn to either enter or do whatever it is you have to do when you get there. So I'm in favor of the roundabout without going on and on forever.
Well, I'm a believer in learning from other people and I agree with this gentleman's And I agree with this gentleman's comment that the federal and the state all have gathered survey evidence that supports the improved safety of roundabouts. So I think all the issues that have been raised are solvable. And I think it is a matter that people are going to slow down. They're going to wait and yield to other people because they're, and they're going to be able to do it more effectively because they're slower. I have driven in roundabouts that had commercial development all around them. I lived in Annapolis for 10 years and they have, and actually even got a picture of the roundabout. And it was right in the most congested part of Annapolis. People slowed down. People gave way to pedestrians because the crosswalks were clear. To bicycles, it was very heavily used. And so I don't think that is actually going to be a significant issue for this particular intersection. I've driven roundabouts all over Cape Cod with bus, with blue, big blue bus, with the dart buses. You know, people have to slow down. I think Pat is right. And that's what delivers the safety benefit of it. You know, you have to begin to take it all in and figure out how to get through the intersection slowly. And there's no more of the stuff of just ripping through on a green light or stepping on the yellow. The other thing is, a bicyclist myself, I always felt very insecure parked in the left-hand lane to make, left-hand side of the left-hand vehicle lane to make a left turn across the intersection, whether it was a traffic signal with a green arrow or not. I always felt very vulnerable in that situation. And that experience predisposes me to think, I think the statistics are telling us something and we ought to pay attention to it. So I'm in favor of a roundabout. And I do respect the positions of all of our town employees in trying to sort this thing out. And I don't think it's a simple problem. And particularly Peter's issues of those two areas on 151 and County Road where we have pedestrian and bicycle crossing. We definitely need to improve the signage and the warning for vehicles to make sure that they yield to pedestrians and bicyclists in those areas.
I just wanted to say one more thing. I find that the drivers are far more courteous to each other when you come to a roundabout or like that. They just are. At least in my experience here on the Cape in going around them. They, even trucks, you know, business people, they just, they just come to that rotary and they just slow down. And they're not anxious to just jump in and beat you before, when it's really your turn. So I find that there is a lot more, a lot more drivers are courteous.
Peter, on the schedule of the way this is now going to proceed, you say both, we're not even at the pre-25% stage of this. Because I have an issue with both of them. And, you know, I'd like the traffic signals, they would do this. I'd like the roundabout if they would do this. Is there a way that we can push them to sort of solve both problems before we have to really decide? I don't really want to go with either one of those plans right now.
Yes, I think the response that the selectmen sends back to the state is the next response. I think it should be outlined in there. Whatever option is chosen, either the roundabout or the intersection design, I think it should be clear to the state that, you know, the town of Falmouth really wants to be involved with the design, both designs.
As you're saying, the right-of-way that's available would allow for the roundabout to be a little bit wider so those islands, the safety islands could be bigger and allow the pedestrian bicyclists to have a little bit bigger space to wait as they try to cross.
Yeah, basically what I did, they're a little hard to see, but in green, I put the splitter islands on each of the four corners. They, they look like probably about 20 feet. They probably 12 feet at the front and come down to 20 feet long and come down to two or three feet at each end.
But you might be able to expand the whole thing and make those a little bit bigger.
Correct, yeah. Oh, no. Engineers are a funny breed of people. They, you can basically design anything, you can basically design anything they want to design. It's just that Tetra Tech would be the ones doing the design from under Mast dot's control. And I would just like to have a little bit more interest in the sections that, with Tetra Tech through Mast dot. Exactly what I was going to say is that I would like to be able to work and have the others in town be able to work. So what will happen, since there's no right-of-way, right-of-way with the state usually takes the longest time because they got to go and they got to do the real estate, the appraisals and what have you. With this design, as of right now, there's no right-of-way takings. So that's why they probably have it in the 2017 and they're kind of trying to push it. But what they'll do is the response from the selectmen, if whatever choice you use, they'll go with that choice. And they still have to come back to the town with the 25%. So what they've done so far over at the Herman Room or at the library was a pre-25%. It was basically to get the buy-in from the public, from the town of Falmouth, to see which one you liked. So now they'll go to a 25%. And then after 25%, is when they really get going. So after 25%, it's usually get to 70%. They don't like to go back, it changes a lot of things at that time.
Just one more thing. I was at both of the public meetings and it was kind of overwhelmingly against the roundabout.
Like we say, both designs, both designs will work in the area. It's just I think the roundabout will need closer attention to the details on that.
So what I think I hear you saying is that up to the 25%, you could go either way.
This can go either way. This is basically probably 15%, 15 to 20%. They already have the lanes, they already have the lanes set up. They already have the council, they already know what they want to do with the loops, with the traffic intersection, how they want to phase it. The roundabouts, they already pretty much have it scaled then. They just have to do the final details for the 25, come back. And then they'll get the comments from the town, go back. And then they'll put the 70% together. And that will include the reflective signage and the striping and the different things that Falmouth has requested.
I guess what I would love to do is I'd love for them to work on the roundabout and see if there's any way they can answer the concerns that we've had from our professionals. If they can't, then go back, you know, push them a little bit, saying, you know, you're saying that after, at 25%, they can go back and say, you know, we have issues with this. Can you solve these issues? If they can't, forget it. Maybe that's putting more work on them than they really do.
And we need to do, I think, a lot more outreach than just, just with, I mean, more than just the council and agent. We need to get more people involved.
Like they say, with the roundabout, it's a learning curve.
Yeah, it is.
I've been through roundabouts. There's a particular roundabout on 3 Aon City. It's been designed, it was torn out, redesigned, torn out and redesigned again. It's just that the way that the intersection, just the way that all those roads come together there. To me, it doesn't work well. But I've been through other roundabouts, smaller and larger, that do work. And just to answer a couple of comments, I think at this point right now with the roundabout, they're looking at one lane through the roundabout. So it'll be one lane around. And then they have that, those two inner circles there. The area between that would be like the stamped concrete or like the brick. That would be, it's like an overflow lane that if they had to get through, it's an off-tracking lane for the trucks, the larger trucks that come. A lot of times they can't maneuver around that. So they'll go, they'll use the off-track and then go onto that stamped concrete or brick.
They call it a truck apron.
Correct. So as long as that's sized right for them or what have you, the boats coming across. But right now, they have it set up for one lane.
What is the diameter of that?
I would say, let's say body scale, it's probably like a cul-de-sac. Probably 50, 60 feet.
It's not a big roundabout.
Trying to think of a roundabout that it would match. It's probably around, the, was it the one on?
The Race Lane is probably pretty close.
The Race Lane.
Probably close.
So what's the pleasure of the board? Do you have more input?
What are our, what's our drop dead date here? Do we have a drop dead date?
I don't believe there's a drop dead date right now. I think what the state would just like to have comments back from the town to say what direction they're going. What will happen is it's on the 2017 list. But if it gets closer to the 2017 list, that project will just drop out. And they'll just, they have a footnote, so many other projects will just put one in its place.
So we can say now, if we have to send a letter to the state now, the board is divided in a sense.
I would, I'd like to put in it to answer Julian's question.
What's that?
First of all, that he brought up and said they haven't answered it. And they're really pushing the rotary. So at least if we delay the vote, then the roundabout, then maybe they will accommodate some improvements.
I don't know whether it was a revised presentation or not, but I have four pages here on converting traffic signals to roundabouts of different examples. So.
In the Commonwealth?
Yep. Anyway, so.
They didn't provide any of that to us.
I, yeah, you know, this was the latest thing that Diane asked them to send us, the latest version. And they may very well have slipped in something that, I know they didn't give it to us in May.
No, but we saw it the other day.
But here it is, you know, four pages.
I don't recall seeing it either.
Yeah.
Where are they?
Colorado.
Yeah. They've got Golden, Colorado, Hillsborough Street, Hamhurst, Mass. and Hudson, Mass. So there's four examples of converting traffic signals to roundabouts. Now, we don't have, well, they do have some comments there, but I don't know whether we have any real history as to how effective or ineffective those conversions were, so.
I just believe with the roundabout, I mean, I'm not sure how much more they can do with the design they have right now. They might be able to widen the splitter islands, make the islands a little bit longer, a little more wider, crosswalks and some more signage. But the actual physical roundabout itself, basically, it is what it is. It's not going to do anything. I think, I think, Pat, you had hit it right in the head, is the public outreach and people getting used to.
We need to hear what people have to say.
Other than, we did have one in West Falmouth. Other than that, is there any other rotaries in Falmouth? You get the Massey Rotary, that's a large rotary. That's a.
That's a rotary.
Rotories, they're really not the same as roundabouts.
Right, this is a much smaller scale.
Yeah.
Roundabouts is a smaller version.
I mean, sometimes the one on 149, well, I notice when I'm coming the other direction, back to Falmouth, when you make that turn, sometimes it's very tight, that last, that last curve there, you really have to watch it. It's not that way going the other direction for some reason.
I don't want to prolong this, I know it's been a long night. One other big thing with the, with the roundabout, with the state is they're notorious for maintenance. It's just it has to make sure that the edges of it are cut back and the center island's clean so you can see, you have the visibility and sight distance. So a lot of the intersections and a lot of the roundabouts that they do show, Braintree, Weymouth, I was actually, did the survey on some of those in the state. And they love to show those because they were just built, only like two months old, three, four months old. But as the years go on, just the maintenance on the cutback, so.
Mayor, may not be relevant, but isn't there a new rotary in Orleans that's in the fairly commercial area? Do you know anything about the side?
I think it's controversial, actually.
A lot of complaints from the residents in the Cape Cod times.
There's going to be when there's change, I know.
No, no, but I'm saying that there are problems with it. It's pretty well accepted.
Similar to this design?
But it's not like a four, it was not a four-way intersection at the time. It has roads to come in from the side. I haven't been around it since it was completed. But I was around it when they were working on it.
I was suggesting that maybe something that town residents may want to go visit, see what the issues are, or as presented.
I think that would be a wonderful idea.
How about a road trip to North Falmouth to hear from the residents there? Some meeting in August before we do anything forward?
You mean meet with some people from North Falmouth? Yeah, where?
At the elementary school.
I think that's good. I think, I think we should do that.
Yeah, because I know there are people who are, who don't like the roundabout. Yeah, so I think that's a good thing to do.
Not taking any action tonight and get some more information?
No action tonight. Meeting in August, yeah, that's good.
Thank you all very much for your input. We will keep letting you know what's happening.
It's his democracy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is a request for a fee waiver for the beach worship service. Thank you for staying with us.
Good evening, I think, if I remember, I'm Rebecca Mencelli, the pastor at John Wesley United Methodist Church. And again, I first just want to thank you very, very much for allowing us the opportunity to have this, the services on the beach. Already excited about it and talking about it, so I thank you very much. I do just want to say that I was somewhat surprised when I got a letter from the town requesting the fees, the $75 for each week and plus the filing fee, plus the $300 refundable deposit. And I just would like to share with you a couple of thoughts. One, I guess I view this not as a special event. It's not a one-time event. It's not for personal use. It's not for profit. I view it more as a public community event for the public good on public property. So that's one thing. Second, my thought is that this fee creates an undue financial burden for the church that's inconsistent with the whole intent of what we're trying to do for the following reasons. One, our income is solely from contributions and the generosity of our congregants and others. And like most churches, John Wesley is concerned about our finances. And we try very hard to be very good stewards of the money we have. And after paying our bills and our programs and ministries and staff and building and maintenance, our money then goes back into the community. Just to share with you, in the past year, we have donated over $15,000 to local charities, to name a few. The Falmouth Service Center, Fair Winds Around the Table, Heroes in Transition, Upper Cape Chaplaincy, Carousel of Light, Cape Cod Center for Women, Habitat for Humanity, and a lot more. In addition, we also support and open our doors, our facilities, to numerous community organizations. Groups like, we heard a lot about Bikes Tonight. We house the Falmouth Bike Lab. In fact, that's one of our ministries. We have four different AA groups. We have Narcotics Anonymous, Falmouth Eats Together with the Falmouth Service Center, Sight Loss Program, Mothers in Recovery, Coalition for Children, Girl Scouts, Blood Drives, Neighborhood Falmouth, and I can go on and on. So I just feel like, based on what our church tries to give back to the community in such a variety of ways, that I would just respectfully request that we might be able to have a waiver to the fees.
Questions, comments?
The $300 surprised me. I guess I didn't expect that.
I think $75 was the amount requested per occasion.
The payment is reimbursable.
Oh, it's reimbursed.
It's a deposit.
$75 would be the amount.
Per day is what it was requested.
And our policy has been that we have one, at least one fee, right? That we don't waive all, but we might waive everything but the first fee. Isn't that the way we have it set up?
That's what we have done in the past with some organizations. So we always say that we can't waive at all.
Right. I would be very much in favor of that, waiving the second week's fee. And if it turns out that we end up extending the use of the beach area for the services and not charging the fee thereafter, but at least upfront, charging one day's fee at least.
It's a slippery slope. And I think that every organization that we charge a fee would love to say the reasons why we shouldn't. There isn't one that wouldn't say to us, please give us a waiver. We do A, B, and C for the town. And I think if our rules are that this is what we charge, using part of the town's land, that this is what we charge. And it's been our criteria. And to waive the fee, I disagree with because there isn't anyone that comes, that we go through their requests, that they wouldn't say, well, I'd like to waive the fee. I don't know why the town is charging me that. So it's a slippery slope. And the other issue that we So it's a, it's a slippery slope, and the other issue that we did not bring up last week, or at our last meeting, was that we had a letter also from the church who made the statement that, that would just withdraw all of this request for this year and would start in again next year, but we didn't discuss it, we just got so far and we didn't go. So there's a very light thought of, well, maybe we won't do it this year, or maybe we will. And I think we've agreed upon having it one time. Is it one time?
Twice.
Twice. And we're going to wait and see how that happens, but as far as waiving a fee, I would say every single person that comes in and pays a fee would like to say that same sentence. So it's a slippery slope to me.
What is the fee we're talking about?
I believe it's the same thing as we have for wedding fees, which is the seventy-five dollar fee for the use of the beach.
Per event, she has two scheduled, so that's one fifty.
It's on the third page of what Diane sent along to you.
Can I ask? But there is a category called special events permits fees, and it says events up to forty-nine people, twenty-five dollars per day. That's in the middle page.
For the town beaches, for weddings and ceremonies, and that's where I see this being most similar to anything else that's going on, is whether it's a wedding or ceremony.
Okay.
I don't want to talk about waiving future fees at all. I think what's before the board is the fees for the two, two events that we've already approved.
Well, I move that we waive the second fee for the two weeks.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All right. Our motion is to have the fee be for seventy-five dollars for the two Sundays. All those in favor, say aye.
Say that again, what was the motion?
Seventy-five dollars for the fee for using it for two Sundays, plus the ten-dollar filing fee, which is not something I think we actually can waive, and the, we would still have the three-hundred-dollar refundable deposit. That's my understanding, but I think it would be in touch with the motion.
That was the.
That's my intention.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Thank you very, very much, and may I just ask one more question while I'm here, only because since we did, and you know that we chose July 5th and July 12th to do these, so these are the next two Sundays upcoming. And the next, after our meeting two weeks ago, I met with Don Hofer at the beach the very next morning, and we looked at where to have it, and he showed me all the facilities, and we talked about who was going to be there, who was already there, and who would let us in, so we went through all the specifics. So based on my nineteen years of doing this, and assuming that there won't be any issues to it, for your next meeting, which I know is, would be on the thirteenth, and I understand it's a Betterment hearing that's off premises at the high school, I believe, so, just because if there are no problems and it goes well, since continuity would be important, would I be able to get on your agenda for the thirteenth?
You'd probably call the office and they'd set you up.
Do you do business meetings on that?
Yes, we are planning on having some business meeting, part of the meeting, after the Betterment hearing, to conduct some business that evening also.
But that goes through the secretary of, in the town manager's office.
Okay, okay, because I knew that sometimes if you didn't do it, was there a way of emailing or getting some information, so we didn't have that pause?
We'd have to have it a meeting this guy.
Okay, okay, I will talk to the secretary.
But I think, just to clarify, the charter does say that you put your request into either the chairman or the town manager, and they're the source to get onto the agenda.
I'll do that first thing in the morning. Thank you, thank you very much.
All right. Next we have our reports. Do we have any individual selectmen's reports?
How about half of one?
Okay, we can do a half of one.
I wanted to mention, well, I think a number of us went to the Fire and Rescue Department Awards for special, beyond the Call of Duty activities, that was fantastic, it was great to hear about some of these. I went to the Volunteers in Public Schools Recognition Dinner, always something terrific, and they celebrated having passed one million hours of volunteering during this past school year. Let's see. It was fun to go to Lynn Grant's retirement party, reception, I guess you would say, what a great contribution she's made to the town over thirty-six years, and it was great to hear her credit being given to her in great detail. It was, along with several other selectmen, the St. Mark's Three Affordable Housing Dedication Day last past Saturday, was really a nice event and speaks well for the effort of local people in Falmouth that really are trying to look out to help neighbors and particularly young families find an affordable place to live in town and be part of this community. One more thing that just happened this morning, I know Pat was there, and that's the welcoming of a five-hundred-thousand-dollar gift grant.
Sue was there, Joe.
Sue, too, excuse me, I'm sorry. I remember the mosquitoes, too. But from the, the State's Department of.
Environmental Protection.
Environmental Protection, and I guess.
Five-hundred-thousand dollars, that's pretty good.
I'd say, and this could, it actually brings the, the, the Port Shippon Environmental Trust efforts to raise money to purchase this property, up to two million dollars, and they need a hundred thousand dollars more. So if there's any wealthy benefactors that want to help push it over, oh, here's an opportunity to make a small contribution, and, and actually create a tremendous conservation resource, taking land out of development that would put nitrogen into the pond, which then, you know, flows out through the, into the sound itself, but also preserving some natural habitat of some relatively endangered species, and a beautiful site.
Twenty-two acres.
Yeah, and twenty-two acres, and they're going to put walking trails through it, that's the next part of the project, so a great thing happening for Falmouth. And we need to give credit to our representatives in the State House, Vinnie DiMascio, David Viero, Tim Madden, all working together to try to keep the interest of Falmouth in front of our legislators and our administration as well, because this is money actually that came out of 2015, not the next year's budget. So this was something they kept putting in front of everybody and justifying why this is an important contribution to be made to a town here in Massachusetts, and it happened, and they deserve special attention.
It was a great thing.
It really is.
And got to mention Wendy Bissler, I mean, she is the person behind all this, she just works so hard for the trust.
And Jonathan, and Jonathan Smith.
Jonathan Smith.
Who does the fundraising efforts, we're both there, and that's right. And I guess we should mention Matt.
Beaton.
Secretary.
Secretary Matthew.
Matthew Beaton.
Who came down dressed in his casuals, the flops and his kayak in the back of his pickup truck, but.
He was, he was in Lacoit Bay earlier in the day, about six a.m. And also to mention, the town manager was also there for the event.
Absolutely. But to be here in Falmouth, and really, you know, I'm sure he's been here many times before, but he certainly was there, empathetic to our appeals, and, you know, and responded to them, and that's, we definitely need to give him credit for his role in this.
Any other reports?
Did you, did you mention yesterday, or was it only yesterday, the housing, St. Mark's?
Yeah.
Yeah, you mentioned that, okay. I wanted to mention that the Cape Cod Commission held the, I don't know what he calls it.
Two-oh-eight.
Yeah, on the, well, they have the two-oh-eight plan, but sort of an update is what it was, I think, billed as. And there were about a hundred and fifty people there at Harwich in their new school, the Monomoy Regional School. Mark was there, and Ray Jack was there, and then Hildy and Earl were there, and I didn't see anybody else from Falmouth, but I was sitting in the back. But it was, it was very well done, Paul just kind of just gave an update and a summary, but I would say there were people from almost every town on the Cape there, so it was, it was very good. It's good to keep in touch with, with what all this is.
Moving forward, the concept is happening, incredible.
Tomorrow night, we're having another meeting on the, with the commission's seven committee night.
On the Marriott? Oh, yes.
Spring, this week.
Yeah, this, this will be the third hearing, I think, probably the last hearing, it'll be at Morse Pond School again at six P.M., I think it is, it's time, not six-thirty. So, yeah, I've got nothing about that.
I think all of us were at one of the sessions, at least for the senior center site study last Thursday.
Right.
And I also was able to represent the board at the Citizen Academy, Police Assistance Academy graduation last Thursday. It's wonderful that we have every, from spring and fall, thirty people who are eager and willing to find out what is going on with the police force, and that was wonderful. I did want to let people, the public, know that there is a concern, and I think this may be why Secretary Beaton was in Lacoit, about jellyfish in the Lacoit Bay area that I guess are invasive species that were around last year and may be coming back again there right now in that part of the coast, but just to be aware that they're very small, stinging jellyfish, and I'm sure we'll get more information out to the people soon, but that's where we are right now with that.
Yeah, there was just a recent incident that we got through an email contact documenting the fact, they're called clinging jellyfish, because they actually, once they sense water agitation, they actually move toward the source of the agitation and hunt you down, essentially, which is not like most jellyfish, which you just think of, you're just kind of moving through the water on their own mission, well, these are actually trying to prey on you. And one of the daughters reacted allergicly to it so badly that she had to go to the emergency room. So these are not benign things with an occasional sting or anything like that, but appear to be fairly toxic, I guess is the right way to describe it.
Any other selectman, timely interest report?
I just wanted to mention one other thing, and some of you may not have heard of the ARC, the Agricultural Resource Corporation down in Dennis, and it's, it's a group of three people who have been actually creating seed, you know, well, not, they don't create it, but I mean, they, they get it and they grow it at two, at certain sizes, and they ship it out all over the country. But they provide so much seed for all the fishermen here on Cape Cod and all the towns and everybody else that, that it's, if they went out of business, the shellfish industry would probably just die. So anyway, the whole idea was, how is it going to get funded? So Dan Wolf went to the state, and he, he got, I think it was five-hundred-thousand dollars in state funds, and the county came up with two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. And I don't know who the other party was that came up with the other two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, but all together, we were able to save the whole industry in just this year, and it all had to be done by July 1st. And now, the, the property is going to be divided a little bit differently, and they're going to, the buildings that they have, they've been there for so long that they're falling apart, and so some of this money will go to really, to rebuild some of the, you know. So anyway, that was a really good thing, that the shellfish industry for Cape Cod was saved, by the state, by the county, by everybody, you know, putting in funding.
Ms. Sisow?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Couple items, on this past Friday, Public Works Director Ray Jack and others held the first formal meeting with licensed plumbers regarding the Little Pond Sewer Service Project. As you know, informal discussions and contacts have already been underway with plumbers, and I'm advised it was, it was a very productive session, and one or more follow-ups are already being planned. The Betterment Hearing notices for the Little Pond Sewer Service Area hearing to be held, as Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman has noted, at six-thirty P.M. on Monday, July 13th, at the high school, have been mailed via certified mail to all involved property owners' tax mailing addresses. And a sample copy of that notice has been transmitted to the board. And also is noted, you have a joint session with the school committee on Tuesday, July 7th at seven P.M. at the Falmouth High School Library regarding suggested senior center sites with a consultant. Also, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I wanted to note that there was a concern raised, we've had a few concerns about the condition of fire hydrants, and Water Superintendent has confirmed that a painting program is initiating this summer season, and it will be underway. I don't have information on how many hydrants that will cover and how quickly they will move, but I did want to confirm that that is underway. It was my pleasure to join in that meeting this morning with OPEC where the five-hundred-thousand dollar grant was received, recognizing the work of so many others bringing that together. I also wanted to advise the board that the, we've spoken about the Little Pond Sewer Service Area and the low-pressure pumps, and the fact that the town would be acquiring those on behalf of those property owners affected, and I wanted to advise the board that we will begin the bidding process for those low-pressure pumps within the coming thirty days, and we will keep you posted on that as that unfolds. Also wanted to give a brief update, as the board's aware, Officer Richard Bradley was in a very severe accident Saturday evening, where he was hit head-on by a car moving in another direction. He did undergo some additional surgery today, and I understand that he is recovering, he's on the comeback trail, but his injuries were, of course, severe. So we're thankful that he will be okay and will be recovering. Also wanted to, oh, wanted to note that, given that July 4th falls on a Saturday this year, Town Hall and Town Administrative Offices will be closed on Friday, July 3rd, in observance of that holiday. As you know, Saturday holidays are observed the day before in terms of employee days off, Sunday holidays the day after. So this will be Friday, July 3rd, this Friday, Town Hall and Town Administrative Offices closed. Speaking of July 4th, I'd like to defer to my colleague, Assistant Town Manager Heather Harper, for a few comments on July 4th planning, including the traffic plan. Heather?
Sure. All the departments met with the fireworks committee, all of the public safety and public works departments involved in carrying off this very large event. We meet annually in advance of the fireworks celebration, the Fourth of July celebration with Dutch Drollette. We know that we'll, we'll learn early in the day if there's a rain date necessary, and please recall that the rain date will be either the 5th of July, and if it continues to rain the 5th of July, it's pushed off to the following weekend. So those additional plans were made this year in the event of a complete rainout for the weekend. The police department, as you are aware, has no allowed days off, the entire department will be in force in Falmouth Heights. There's multiple facilities available to the town, including, if you recall, last year, they had very large lights available that they'd turn on at the end of the event to help the crowd disperse and make their way back to their vehicles safely. There's also the new surveillance vehicle, that was a donation from the Falmouth Road Race that's available, along with the ATV, rescue ATV, also donated from the Road Race that's available to the Fire Rescue Department. The same routine in terms of the public safety program is in place with the headquarters to be at the, beginning at seven P.M. at the Harbor Masters Office, and if you're in the area, they welcome to stop by if you're planning to be in Falmouth Heights that evening. But I can tell you that everything's well in hand to manage a very, very large-scale event. Public Works crews are also on-site, they do a early, a late afternoon cleanup, bring in fresh trash cans, stay out of the way until the event is over, do an initial cleanup, and then the next morning, a full crew is sent out to clean up. I know last year was by early in the morning, the next morning, and it's almost as though nothing occurred. As long as we carry out those protocols, hopefully it will be a very safe and enjoyable fireworks celebration for the community. The traffic plan, I can hand out, there's some small changes from last year, but the traffic boards will be up in the days ahead, because the copier was broken, I only have two copies, I can share more with you, in fact, I can email it to you. But this will be posted and sent to the enterprise in advance of the event, so the folks know that really, after the event, traffic is out of Falmouth Heights with very little option in terms of training movements. Their goal is really to get people to take a left out of the heights and then make their way back where they need to get to off Cape or back east on the major central arteries.
Just one additional point. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Just one additional point, oh, I'm sorry, with your chair. Arthur Ratzey from the Chamber was selling T-shirts all weekend at Stop &amp; Shop, and in addition to the tremendous effort for safety, I mean, just the tremendous townwide effort for funding this is really incredible, and it's, it's a completely community-driven event, which is great.
Did they say anything about the fundraising, you know, where they are with it?
We didn't get a number, they know they'll close in on it, but it is a very tremendous effort every year to get to the.
It's a huge cost now, it's gone tremendously from many years ago.
I just had a question, is this the biggest event that Falmouth has?
Yes.
I think it is, pretty much. It's hard to judge the road race, because it's so spread out.
Much bigger.
But this is.
In terms of the, the amount of folks in one location at one time, yes.
Exactly, I thought as much.
It's also the best fireworks.
Rated, top rated, yes.
In the northeast, I've heard it rated, it's the best.
That's true.
I'll just add a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Done, second in favor?
Aye.
Sure, thanks, Senator.